You ready? Now, clock over here says six. Okay. Karen, is Matt coming tonight? All right, we're starting.
Didn't get to see you.
Where you sitting? Go sit right over there. Go sit right over there.
Thank you.
Good evening and welcome to the February seventeenth, twenty twenty five Spalding County Board of Commissioners extraordinary session. The time is six P M. We would request that you please silence your cell phones and all other electronic devices. At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Gwen Flowers Taylor to offer the invocation and Commissioner James Dutton to lead us in the pledge to the flag.
If you would, join me, please. Father God, we come here tonight in your presence with thanksgiving and asking for grace. We ask you to be in the room with these participants of our county, with this board and with all of our staff. We ask you to allow our ears to hear with our heart and to understand what is the best things that we need to do for the future of this county. We ask you to be with our first responders and all of our law enforcement as they go their way. We were thankful for all of the staff that helped over the weekend with the horrific storm damage. And we just thank you for the ability to be able to serve people in that capacity. We ask you to be with everyone here as they come and as they leave this meeting. These things I ask in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Please show me the flag.
Collective allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, in the interest of handling our business more expeditiously, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to move item number four of new business. Consideration of remaining in or opting out of House Bill eight five one to item number five after public hearings.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Four, all opposed, one, thank you. All right. The first item on the agenda is a public hearing of House Bill five eighty one. The county manager, Steve Ledbetter, will provide a brief overview of what House Bill five eighty one is. And then afterwards, we'll move into the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Board of Commissioners, for the opportunity to share with you just briefly about House Bill five eighty one. As we've held our previous two public hearings, I just want to go over the components of the legislation very briefly. The House Bill five eighty one aimed at providing property tax relief and modifying local government revenue structures specifically around the statewide floating homestead exemption. This is an exemption. It is not a property valuation decrease. It's a floating exemption that applies to that increase. The second component is it offers a new local option sales tax, commonly referred to as FLOST. It is a floating local option sales tax that will need to come before the voters in Spalding County by referendum in November, should the board make the decision to opt in. This would add an additional penny to our sales tax. It does, number three, provide for property tax procedural changes. The bill includes various procedural changes to property tax assessment and pills. The fourth component is a referendum process that we've just discussed with respect to providing for the FLOST. It does not change any of the exemptions that we currently have in place, so those exemptions would stay in. On November fifth of twenty twenty four.
I'm sorry. Say that last part again about exemptions. I've had two or three people talk to me about they think they're all going to go away.
Yes, sir. Those exemptions will stay according to how the law is currently structured. Those exemptions would stay in place as they always have.
So no matter how the county acts tonight, the current exemptions all stay.
That's correct. That is correct. Yes, sir. On November fifth of last year, Georgia voters were asked by referendum to consider the following. Shall the Constitution of Georgia be amended so as to authorize the General Assembly to provide by general law for a statewide homestead exemption that serves to limit increases in the assessed value of homesteads, but which any county consolidated government municipality or local school system may opt out of upon the completion of certain procedures? The vote for Spalding County is listed here on the right-hand side of the screen. In favor was eighteen thousand eight fifty seven, sixty point three two percent. Those opposed were twelve four oh six or thirty nine point six eight. A yes vote supported providing for a local option homestead property tax exemption and allowing a county municipality or school system to opt out of the exemption.
All right, so back there, Steve, one more time. Let me ask another question. I heard a number of people come to me and said, we voted and consequently, there is no opt out that we voted for. Sixty percent voted for us to stay in, when in fact, the words say may opt out. So the vote was, there's an option to vote, to opt out.
That is correct. That was the vote. The vote was to consider House Bill five eighty one for the homestead exemption with an opt out clause. That is correct. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any questions? That's all my update for just the legal component. In a few minutes after the public hearing, I would like to present a more technical and more detailed component of House Bill five eighty one with respect to Spalding County.
Okay. We're moving into the public hearing. Yes. Do I have a motion to move into public hearing? You'll talk. Okay, yes. All right. No, I want, we've done it this way, same way, the first two times. Let's do it again. Commissioner Dutton?
All right, so they've asked me to, just like the last two meetings, they've asked me to talk about this. We've been going over this since the beginning. And just for transparency of kind of picking our minds up here, I get to be the spokesperson and sort of talk about what we're seeing. Now, Dr. Ledbetter is going to give us a more technical presentation in a minute, but we've already seen it a few times. And I just want to talk about what our job is here as the county commissioners and what that means for this specific bill. So first and foremost, nobody wants to raise your taxes. All right, let's all get on the same page. Nobody wants to raise your taxes. Okay? In fact, we want to continue to lower our millage rate. We've been able to lower our millage rate pretty much every year except one since I've been here. The plan at our retreat back in January is that we believe that we can do it again this year. That's the current plan. No one wants to raise your taxes. The issue in Spalding County is that more so than most other counties, more so than the overwhelming majority of counties, our taxes come from residential homeowners. I want to say it's ninety four percent of our property taxes, which is the bulk of the taxes that we get, come from residential properties. And that's because of the historic way that the county has been governed since, you know, the twenties and thirties and forties and fifties, where it was mills and the mill villages as opposed to wanting increased infrastructure. This is why seventy five doesn't go down nineteen forty one, but Kareen's around Spalding County. They, historically, those guys wanted it to just be a residential community and not have this outside flow, which now puts us in this hard position of how do we transition away from that and into a more industrial and commercial based situation? If you look at, I describe it as a triangle. We have the service level that the county provides, fire coverage, you know, police coverage, you know, all the services, the amount of taxes that we charge, and yet the amount that we can actually collect from industrial and commercial. So there's sort of a triangle. If we don't have enough industrial and commercial, right, then the amount of services has to be smaller and the amount of taxes on the residential has to be higher. If we can increase the amount of commercial and industrial growth, then we can lower the taxes on residential and yet still provide the same amount of services. If we keep, you know, kind of stagnant where we're at, then every year we have to lower the amount of services that are being done. Does that make sense? So are the amount of services that we as a county provide is not extravagant. It's more than some counties. We have a full-time fire department, unlike, say, Pike County. Pike County has just a volunteer fire department. But because of that, the homeowner's insurance in Pike County is much higher. They have a higher insurance rating, which means that they're going to pay more for their homeowner's insurance. And actually, that difference in Spalding County is actually, it's actually cheaper to pay for the full-time fire department and have the discount on our homeowner's insurance than it would be to save the money on fire departments and then to pay the extra in homeowner's insurance. So you have to look at those services. Now, there's a lot of services that we don't offer. Clayton County, Henry County, both have county police departments. We just have a sheriff department. There's a lot of things that we could do more of, that we're conscious that we need to do more of. You know, we are aware of how expensive it is to fix roads. We're aware of how expensive it is to, you know, do code enforcement and animal control. The, all that said, we still have to balance where we're at. Now, in order to just keep our same level of service, so not hire any new sheriff's deputies, any new firemen, any new clerks in the courthouse, just to keep our same level, our cost increased just like yours do every year. Inflation hits us just like it hits y'all. Okay? So the average on a year, and again, it's, you know, it sort of fluctuates. That's how economies work. We need around three million dollars more a year just to keep the same service level the same. All right? Just to have the same number of firemen, the same number of sheriff's deputies, to keep the same level of service, we need around three million more a year. Okay? That's not hiring new people. That's not adding new buildings. That's just doing the same thing we're doing. Now, we know that the county is growing. People are moving into the county, you know, five to eight percent a year. And so we actually do need more firemen and more sheriff's deputies and more clerks and more prosecutors and, you know, more county services. But that's not included in that three million. Just to maintain where we're at now, not growing, is three million. Okay? So, that said, the state comes in every year and they give us what they think our assessed values should be. Okay? They send us a letter. I've seen the letter every year. And it says, y'all are this far below and you have to raise your average assessment by this much, or the state is going to fine you. Okay? And the fines aren't twenty dollars, they're in the millions. Okay? So the state comes in and says, you must raise everyone's assessment. Now, again, this board has nothing to do with the assessments. Feel free to, you know, write letters all you want. We can do nothing about your assessment, not up, not down. We are constitutionally separated from those that, that's a separate board. We can't ask them to raise, we can't ask them to lower. It's totally separate. But the state, every year, sends them a letter and says, you're this far off. You're eight percent off, you're ten percent off, you're fifteen percent off. You got to raise this. And so the state comes in and makes those assessors go through and raise everyone's assessment. Okay? That increase, sometimes it's where it should be, sometimes it's higher than we all think it should be. Certainly, mine was higher than I thought it should have been. The, but inflation hits the value of our houses as well. Okay? Most of that increase is because of inflation. But there also are increases in the value of our homes because Spalding County is on the rise. It's a better and better place to live every year. It's a more and more desirable place for people to move to. We have better services, our crime rates going down. I mean, there's really good things, really good stuff happening in Spalding County, which makes the properties of our, the values of our property go up. Again, I wish it was as much as inflation, but it really is the inflation rate that's carrying that. And there's nothing any of the five of us can do about the inflation rate. Now, the current bill puts a cap on what those increases and assessments, again, mandated by the state, could be. They're limited to what the CPI is, which is a fancy way of saying the inflation rate. Okay? We all know that there's inflation. We know that there's inflation right now, this year in twenty twenty five. What do you think that the state has set for the inflation rate for this year is? Okay? All right? Three is what it was before Biden. Since then, it's been significantly higher. This year, the state has set an inflation rate of zero. Inflation's gone, y'all. So says the state. There's no inflation this year. Isn't that great? They solved it. Okay? Of course, that's, that defies logic. Okay? Of course, there's inflation. Have you gone to the grocery store? Have you seen the price of eggs? Of course, there's inflation. But this year, the state, instead of like every other year since I've been elected, mandating that these go up eight and ten percent a year, they're saying, well, this year it's zero. Of course, there's no inflation this year. Again, that doesn't make any sense. Okay? So, that said, HB five eighty one limits the taxable value, I'm gonna, he's gonna say it in a more technical way, the amount that can be taxed to go up only by that CPI, which means it couldn't go up this year at all, which is, of course, like, it doesn't make any sense in reality. But if it went up only three percent a year, which is, you know, two and a half, three percent a year, is, it would be good inflation numbers, you know, low inflation numbers in a realistic way, then the amount of increase in our actual budget that we would get would be around a million dollars. Okay? Now, what does that mean? That means we still need three million dollars just to provide the same amount of services. All right? Just to keep the same number of people employed, just to keep doing what we're doing, treading water, not adding anything, not taking away anything, three million dollars. Well, I only get two if we go with HB five eighty one. Well, where are we going to come up with that two million dollars? The only answer would be a millage rate increase. All right? And I started with, no one wants to raise your millage rate. No one wants to raise your taxes. Okay? So, once you opt into this plan, you can't opt out in the future. Now, we can opt in in the future, but we can't opt out once we're in. Okay? So looking at the math of the current situation, this would require us to raise the millage rate by one, if not two mills, every single year for forever. We do not want to do that. Now, I've spoken with the authors of the bill. I've spoken with the state legislative council. I've spoken with ACCG's attorneys. And they all assure us that there's a lot of stuff that the state can do, local legislative action, general legislative action, to change the way that this works in a way that it would work for Spalding County, so that we wouldn't have to, every year for forever, raise your millage rates over and over and over, just to break even. They haven't done those things yet. And I worry about a future change. Once we're in, there's no one else clambering for that change to happen. So is that change going to happen? Right? Is it going to turn into a situation that won't require us to raise your millage rates like it is right now? So that's the conundrum that we're in. Now, there's, there's, part of this law is for a FLOST, a floating local option sales tax. I am a huge fan of sales taxes over any other form of tax. Sales taxes are a voluntary tax, you know, and if you spend more money, because you've got more money, then you pay more in taxes. That's a very fair way to do it. If you want to go and live on, you know, on a compound like a hermit and raise your own food, then you never have to pay sales tax. I love the idea comparative of sales taxes versus property taxes. I think property taxes are the least fair way to raise county revenue. All right? It worked in the eighteen hundreds when it was sort of the landowners paying the taxes. Um, it, it worked in the 1800s when it was sort of the landowners paying the taxes. But we're all landowners now and I don't feel like some lord that, you know, like, should be taxed like that. It really should be more voluntary, which is what a sales tax is. So I, I like the idea of a FLOST. But the FLOST can't be used to bridge that two million dollar gap. Okay? So if we went to a FLOST, A, that would require us opting in. We can't do it if we opt out. And B, it would require us, that, that vote would be in November at best. And then we would have to collect the FLOST for an entire year before that actually comes and can, can lower the, the property taxes. By that point, the, the, the FLOST would collect around eight, eight million dollars a year. It would be the equivalent for us of around four mills. Well, that's on year three. We've had to raise the millage rate one or two a year. So perhaps on year four, we're at where we are right now. And then every year after that, we're worse off again. You see what I'm saying? Like it, a- again, I would love for this plan to be better than it is. I, 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 I love the idea of everyone knowing exactly where we're at every year and, you know, lowering these assessments that are mandated by the state. But, but this, this plan has math behind it. This plan has numbers. We're gonna get into the technical presentation in a second. Those numbers are what they are. We're not making those up. Those aren't, you know, these are based on past actions. These are based on future predictions, but they're not just our guesswork. Okay? These are legal experts, technical experts, budgetary experts looking into this, saying, hey, hey, here's what the numbers are. Um, so no one wants to raise your taxes, but we also don't want to close fire stations. We also don't want to close, uh, you know, i- in, you know, parks. We don't, we, we want to keep the level of service that we're at the same. Um, the, I, I want to stress again, uh, d- you know, despite the misinformation that's being purposefully spread, that the current homestead exemptions that we all have, that I have on my house, don't go away if we opt in. And they don't go away if we opt out. There will be no effect on the current homestead exemptions. None. The, the, the law has nothing to do with current homestead exemptions. Okay? the, the way that this law was sort of written, and again, I'm not trying to, to balloon anybody or start a fight here, but it, it reads in us in a way, hey, don't you want more homestead exemption? But, but that's not what the actual math plays out as. I would love more homestead exemption. You know, a lot of people in the county aren't taking advantage of the, the age exemptions from, uh, schools. The extra 10,000 and 20,000 and 30,000 that they, they could get once they're 65, 70, 75. Uh, and more people should be taking advantage of these. We, we, there's a lot of homestead exemptions that are sort of left on the table in Spalding County. We would like more people to take advantage of those. But at the same time, going with this plan actually doesn't save us any tax money. It, it doesn't. Now, what, if we go back to that triangle, we're actively working to bring in more industrial and commercial. Okay? We have a divided highway, a four-lane highway that goes from the lakes at Green Valley Industrial Park all the way to the county border. Okay? That huge highway, all right, it's 15 minutes, I have to drive it all the time. All right? Uh, and it's 15 minutes, it's 65 miles an hour. Okay? Access road to the whole shebang. All right? That was designed in the 1960s and built in the 1970s. Okay? As an industrial and employee, employment corridor. Okay? That's what that was supposed to be. That's what that is. Okay? But take a stab from the lakes at Green Valley Industrial Park, all the way to the border with Butts County, down our four-lane divided highway that's for our industrial, uh, e- e- employment corridor. How much tax revenue do we receive from that entire corridor every year? Close, very close. What is it?
Ninety-eight thousand dollars.
Ninety-eight thousand dollars total. Well, you know, why? No, there's no one there. There's no growth there. The pilot payments are much more than ninety-eight thousand dollars, but that, that's on our industrial park. And as those are s- switching from pilots to normal, uh, normal property taxes like Caterpillar is, uh, they're paying significant chunks. As industry moves in, all right? Then we can shift, we'll have the ability to maintain current levels of county services and shift that responsibility of the taxes from homeowners onto these industrial, uh, sites. But every time someone comes in and says, hey, I have this great idea, we want to build this. We get a room this full saying, not in my backyard. No, no, no. I don't care what everybody else has to pay on their, uh, uh, you know, on their millage rate. I don't, I don't want to see it. Well, we're not Henry County. Henry County made a lot of mistakes on 155. Drive 155, the traffic is awful and it just, it looks like Gotham City. It's crazy. Okay? We all learned from that. Our rules are significantly different. We have huge setbacks, requirements for vegetation, requirements, you know, that, that they don't have. We learned from the mistakes that Cowee County is currently making, that Henry County has made and is continuing to make. And ours is set up different so that we don't have those same problems. And yet we still have people who want, as soon as they get sewage and water hookup, who are chomping at the bit to come here. Okay? When, as that gets developed, we'll have a larger industrial base. Everyone compares us and our millage rate to Fayette County, to, you know, these other counties. Just Peachtree City has more than double the industrial base of all of Spalding County. Just one city in Fayette County. Does it look horrible in Peachtree City? Do you drive through Peachtree City and go, this is a huge industrial wasteland? No, you don't. Okay? Our rules are very similar to theirs. Why do they have all that? Because people want to build there and they built the water and sewage that enabled them to come. As soon as water and sewage gets from the lakes at Green Valley all the way to the Butts County line, it, it'll, it'll be there. And they'll be paying the lion's share of the taxes. Just the study to figure out where all those pump stations and pipes should go. Okay? How mu- how much was that gonna cost us?
Uh, I,
He don't have it in front of him. I'm putting him on the spot, big time.
Yeah, I don't have a total number for that. I know that, uh, the county invested, uh, 2.9 million of our ARPA funds to support that effort.
Uh, so it's in the millions and millions. Okay? And we don't have millions and millions to spare in our budget. Okay? We need three million new every year just to break even. Just to pay for the additional gas costs, just to pay for cost of living adjustment for our employees. So they don't move and go to other counties and leave. So that, our, our fire departments have two firemen per station. You, you're, you have to have two firemen at a station to keep it open. If somebody calls out sick, we have to close a fire station. You understand? That there's not any fat in the budget. That said, and this is my last point, my last major point. Okay? I know I talk, us lawyers, we get going. Um, my last point here is that our budget is a, is literally an open book. And not only is it there and you can find it, we actively want to share it with you. We would love if more eyeballs got on this, more experts got on this, more people who cared got on it and looked at it. If you can find fat, let us know. If there's a, a, a better distributor for part A and that could save us some money, let us know. I- if you see something that's, that's not right, let us know. Every single year, I beg and beg and beg people, please come in and look at our budget meetings. All right? When we set the millage rate, the room's this full. When we build industrial something, the room's this full. When we talk about the budget, there's nobody in these chairs. Nobody. We have a week-long meeting. We have a zero-based budget. It's not like the feds where, you know, if you didn't spend it, you know, your, your budget gets cut. Every single department head has to come in here, stand at that microphone and justify every red cent from their budget every year. And it's a hassle for them. Some of them in their room and they know it's a hassle. Okay? And that's fine because their budget needs to be justified. Well, do you need this new truck? Can you put off that new truck? Is there a cheaper new truck? Uh, do, you know, well, we're gonna get this mower. Why? Why do you need that mower? Well, it'll cut us down on employee time. Is there a cheaper mower? Why are we doing? All these questions we're asking, okay? Every time for every budget. We invite you to those meetings. Please, please, please come to those meetings. There's five sets of eyes. Dr. Ledbetter is a wizard when it comes to this stuff. He has pulled more rabbits out of his hat than anybody I've ever met. But if we had this many people looking over that budget and going, wait a minute, what's this line item? Wait a minute, what's this for? Okay? We may, y'all may find something that we've missed. Okay? We're pretty good at it, but we're not perfect at it. But we want more. But that's on the spending side. When it comes to HB 581, we need two to three million more a year. HB 581, especially if it's set at a artificial zero for, for inflation, which is nonsense. Then we're gonna get a, around a million dollars a year. Maybe a million and a half. That, that budget shortfall either is closing fire stations, uh, you know, letting deputies go, or it's a millage rate increase. Uh, but that's the math. The, that's the math. It's not that we want to raise your taxes. I, I, I want to reiterate, we do not want to raise your taxes. It's our plan, and it was our plan in January, to continue our, our trajectory of lowering the millage rate. But the math is what the math is. The, it, it doesn't, the math doesn't care about your feelings, doesn't care about your emotions. Here's the math. That said, I hope and pray that the state can make some tweaks to that FLOST, can make some tweaks to the way that this works, that it, that it will be workable for Spalding County. But right now, in its current incarnation, the math is what we're, what we're about to see for Better Let Better. I, I wish, I wish it was different. But we don't want to raise your millage rate. We don't want to raise your taxes. And this plan would cause us to have to do that every year. That's, that's the simple way to put it. Thank you. I get a little long-winded, I'm sorry.
All right. At this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to open the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to open a public hearing.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five, zero. Public hearing is now open. Uh, Dr. Ledbetter, do we have people who signed up to speak this evening?
Yes, sir, we do. Um, first up this evening is Ms. Michelle Drew-Goss. If you would, please step forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Michelle Drew-Goss, 312 Whispering Pines Way, Griffin, Sun City Peachtree.
I'm sorry, Michelle, just a second too. I'm sorry, I'm supposed to have read a whole.
Yes, please.
Excuse me.
Yes, sure.
Uh, speakers must sign up prior to the meeting and provide their names, addresses, and topics they wish to discuss. Speakers must direct your remarks to the board and not to individual members or the audience. Personal disagreements with individual members or county employees are not a matter of public concern and personal attacks will not be tolerated. The chairman has the right to limit your comments in the interest of disposing of the county's business in an efficient and respectful manner. Speakers will be allocated three minutes to speak on their chosen topics as they relate to matters pertaining to the jurisdiction of the Board of Commissioners. No questions will be asked by any of the members during citizen comments. Outbursts from the audience will not be tolerated. Common courtesy and civility are expected at all times during the meeting. No speakers will be permitted to speak more than three minutes or more than once unless the board suspends the rule. Thank you, Michelle, sorry to.
All right, Michelle Drew-Goss, 312 Whispering Pines Way, Sun City Peachtree. Good evening, commissioners. I want to remind you that this board has increased property taxes 48.67% over the last five years. And that is per the history Tax Digest. At the same time, school board increased taxes 48.71%, and that's over the past five years also. Those increases have been a huge hardship for property owners. In fact, property owners have been forced to sell their properties and actually move from Spalding County because of that astronomical increase. At the February 11th School Board Public Hearing on HB 581, a property owner spoke that he has lived in the same property for over 40 years. And in the past three years, his property assessment increased 81%. That is outrageous. That is why our state legislators put HB 581 on the November ballot for the property owners in Georgia to decide. Property assessments had gone up astronomically across the strait. The state and property owners were complaining to their state representatives about the lack of consistency in the increases. HB 581 holds property assessments to a consistent consumer price index, the CPI, which holds to the rate of inflation, not 12%, 25%, 50%, and even 81% increases, which we have been experiencing in the last three years. Commissioners, you need to look at the county manager's numbers from a different perspective. Thirty-three thousand, three hundred and forty-four total properties in Spalding County. Only thirteen thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight of the properties are homestead and exempt with the HB 581. That is a small percentage of the overall properties in Spalding County where this board will still have the opportunity to tax properties without the homestead exemption. This board continues to talk about the need for more industrial and manufacturing to offset the tax burden from residential property owners. But the current manufacturing industrial corporations in the lakes at Green Valley are 100% tax exempt. You have Mericon is, is tax exempt through 2026, Atsuka Chemical, tax exempt through 2030, Toppin, tax exempt through 2026, Renai, tax exempt through 2032, and Eco-Pole, which just opened, tax exempt to 2033. We understand that there is a need for sewers along Highway 16, and that, that's our industrial corridor. But if industry and manufacturing builds in Spalding County, will they continue to receive these massive tax breaks? When you keep promising us that that's going to make a difference to the homeowners. Commissioners, your constituents have spoken with their votes and voted for HB 581. You will be going against the vote of your constituents if you vote to opt out of HB 581. We, the citizens and property owners of Spalding County, ask that you respect the citizens' vote. And you talked about transparency. Where did the money come from to purchase Handlighter Church for 292,000 and upgrade it for 200,000? That was taxpayers' dollars, I'm assuming, that was spent without taxpayer approval. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Let's not get in, if we're gonna get into applauding and everything else, I'm gonna start doing it a little bit differently, please. Let's have everybody have the time. I'm hoping to get out of here in a few hours. So let's try to hold that up a little bit to be able to do that. All right?
My name is Sue Fowler, 2435 Fayetteville Road, Griffin, Georgia. House Bill 581 was implemented, implemented January the 1st, 2025. If you, the ca- commissioners, don't think House Bill 581 will work, why not try adding the 1% sales tax legislators used? Sales tax. Legislators use the clause FLOST tax as a backup to make up the lower tax revenues. How many families in Spalding County actually have homestead exemption? In the city limits, there are 60% or more of the, of the houses are rental. I don't know exactly how many are in the county. I question if there are enough homestead exemption families that, to affect the county's financial needs. If you continue with the tax assessments being eight to 10% per year rise, in 10 years, there will be no low-income homeowners remaining. As ca- commissioners of the Spalding County, I would like to think you would vote as the people in your district voted to implement House Bill 581. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you. Uh, I'm, I'm Tom Thomas. I live at 1367 North Walkers Mill Road in Griffin. I don't have prepared statements, but I will say that, uh, I, I was educated on this, this thing that the state has, uh, said that we have zero inflation. That's news to me. I, I think that as our representatives, what I would expect you guys to do is to be real pit bulls and just fight back. When the state starts giving you nonsense like that, I expect you guys to go to bat just super hard and, and to get the word out. We, we need to know that they're coming up with, with absolute nonsense. They're not giving, they're not doing you any favors. I, I really do think you, you don't want to raise our taxes. I, you're in a tough position, but, uh, we need to know that there's just absolute nonsense. Another thing is that the federal government, uh, the writing on the wall. Another thing is that the federal government, the writing on the wall looks like we're probably going to be seeing less money flowing from DC coming down here. So if there's anywhere you can start to make reasonable cuts, and I know they hurt, the services are going to be probably curtailed in some areas, but if there's anywhere you can cut those and do it smart, but we're probably looking at less federal money coming towards us. Second of all, whether we use the opt-out clause, what I expect is the best deal. I'm paying more money in property taxes than I've ever paid in any other county I've lived in. Some of you are probably too, but what I expect you to do is get us the best deal you can. No one's doing you guys any favors in, you're not getting the industry coming in. I'm guessing that some of those companies that came in and they built, they're getting zero they have basically a zero rate for their property taxes. That was kind of an introductory thing, and we're probably, what, are we contractually obligated to honor that for a period of time? But whatever you can do to get some additional revenues, I'm certainly not going to oppose anymore. I'm fully in favor of more businesses coming in on a business quarter, and I expect it to be done intelligently and smartly. We need the revenues. It's not getting any cheaper to put gas in the police cars, I realize that, and the fire trucks, and people who are first responders, they need money. But I will say this, sometimes, as I've looked at the budget, sometimes, while I trust you that you're scrutinizing it, sometimes there's a little bit of a lack of specificity. Sometimes it's down to the penny, other times it's very round numbers, and I just need you to make sure you are really scrutinizing that. And I'm about out of time, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom.
Cheyenne Burchett.
I'm Cheyenne Burchett, I live at ninety-four Crystal Brook in Griffin, Georgia. I came in here with a lot of notes and clearly not understanding how the government works. I am twenty-four, and I'm a first-time homeowner. Numbers are my language, I'm an electrical engineer. So hearing that you are scrutinizing this and going forward, you're going to continue scrutinizing this, is heartening. Because a lot of the world scares me these days. The prices are going up, I'm an electrical engineer and I barely make ends meet. Like, my mortgage went up by a hundred dollars just because my property taxes went up. And it is scary and horror to be someone who, ten years ago, who would have been owning a two-story house with six bedrooms, to being someone who owns a two-bedroom with her husband and who cannot think of having kids. So I will be coming to more meetings like this and to the budget meetings and scrutinizing things. And I'm just happy y'all seem to be doing the same.
Thank you, Cheyenne.
Michael Middlebrooks.
Hello, ladies and gentlemen, Michael Middlebrooks, eleven oh eight Maple Drive. As I said last time I came for one of these discussions, and as I said at the Board of Education meeting, this is a smoking mirror. You can't win, in my opinion, as the representatives that you're elected in your districts, no matter what you do, whether you opt out or opt in, you're going to get hammered. What I would tell you, from the perspective I have, I don't like the state dictating anything. It's our community, it's where we live. If you opt in and you have unlimited capacity with the military versus the Board of Education, they're limited on military. So we already got a pathetic school system, that's a whole nother story. But we're, y'all have the power of the purse with millage rate regardless of assessments. So if you opt in and you choose the so-called zero percent CPI and you adjust the millage rate, one mill this year, two mills, whatever the case may be, you take the FLOST and you pick up the three million year over year that you need, what happens when another chiller goes out? What happens when the, you know, this is a no-win situation. But in, as bad as it pains me to say what I'm going to say, I don't see opting in as a way forward. If you opt in, we're all going to get it, one way or the other. My preference would be to fine-tune everything you can, look at the useless properties that Spalding County owns, and start selling. Get rid of the liability of expenses on some of these properties. And the first thing I'd put up for sale is that money pit out on sixteen, the Aquatic Center, that cost the taxpayers just this year in the budget one point one million dollars. Let somebody else figure out where to get that one point two million, and let's get out of the pool business. And let's get back to fiscal government. Get rid of the junk, and let's get back to just fiscal government. Hey, parks are nice, but I don't know anybody in this room that's cut a blade of grass in a park. I don't know anybody in this room that's done anything in a park that others who'd enjoy it.
Thank you, Michael.
Timothy Poole.
All right, good evening. My name's Timothy Poole, I live at one one zero eight Sage Drive from District Two. This is my daughter, Wonder, she's homeschooled in third grade and wants to learn more about local governments. Maybe this will be a little bit different spin tonight. I'm a homeowner, taxpayer, private educator, licensed engineer, small business owner, community leader, husband, father, and I am furious. Right now, we're in the middle of a revolution, a financial revolution. It's not hyperbole, this revolution will eventually reach into every level of government spending. We're living in a fascinating snapshot of history right now, seeing major financial overhauls at the federal level. Just look at Elon Musk and Doge exposing and eliminating wasteful spending. I look at House Bill 581, also known as Save Our Homes Act, as another one of these overhauls. Citizens of Georgia voted to ratify this amendment, now it comes here to be adopted by the local government. To opt out of House Bill 581 is to blatantly ignore the will of the people. And to say that we, the people, don't understand it, I believe is unacceptable because we, the people, know what this is and most of us want it. And the way I look at it is, House Bill 581 doesn't reduce our current level of funding. A CPI-equivalent rate cap simply puts realistic limits on out-of-control assessments and prevents homeowners' assessments from increasing faster than the homeowner's income growth. So basically, it raises, it's fair to look at raises that we receive annually. An average raise would be pretty close to CPI, so our assessments should not increase faster than CPI. We know that the assessed value is really only one part of the tax equation. The biggest part of the tax equation is what we write on our checks that comes out of our banks. So House Bill 581 gives us a way to control one of those elements in the equation that we haven't had before, so I like that. That also means to raise taxes, I have to have more public hearings like this, and everybody gets to look each other in the eye, and I think that's a good thing. I like this, it holds the government accountable to the people. Majority of Spalding County voted for this, over sixty percent, as we saw on the slides. What was fascinating to me was that all twenty-one of Spalding County voting precincts voted yes for this, and that's kind of fantastic. So it's a very clear message of what the county wants. But I think a message to everybody in support of House Bill 581, we need to participate more, so we need to attend budget meetings. I didn't do a good job of that last year, but I'm going to make sure to attend this year. And just a comment, I guess, to everybody behind me over here, you know, it does make for a hard sell to protest assessments and millage rates if you don't show up to have input on the budget. So plan on showing up for the twenty-sixth fiscal year budget meeting. But at the end of the day, servant leadership is just embodied by working alongside your fellow citizens, putting the will of your constituents above your own agenda. So honor the will of constituents, do not opt out of 581. You know, right now, our children are watching how you vote, and they're going to see, will you vote with the citizens, or will you further entrench yourself into the government spending machine? One more line item for Doge. Thank you.
Thank you, Timothy.
Bruce Ledbetter.
Did Ms. Poole sign up, did she want to say anything?
Bruce Ledbetter, two forty Roberts Street, Griffin, Georgia. And I'm with Mike with, it's all smoking mirrors, because when y'all presented this long ago before the vote, y'all made it sound pretty dang good. But once you get to twenty-seven pages and you get to looking at it, I don't like it. And there's, only way to get out of it, don't go in it and raise the sales tax two percent if you have to. Don't go with no stupid FLOST, because that's got to go to the Aquatic Center or somewhere crazy like that. So that's about what I had to say, everybody else, except for the ones for it.
Thank you, Bruce. Ray Thomas.
Ray Thomas. Twenty East Lake Circle. Did some research, or a friend of mine did, found out that we're paying one point five percent higher property tax than the national average. Back in two thousand and three, I built my home. Two thousand and five, my property taxes were seven hundred and forty dollars a year. You know what they are today? Three thousand. I'm almost a senior citizen. There's a lot of senior citizens sitting here on a fixed income. Do you have any idea what you're doing to them financially? Or do you even care? Who owns our property? Is it Spalding County, or do we own our property? Are you going to come and kick us off of our property when we refuse to pay your rent? Are you? Are you going to get the local sheriff to do it? You're going to drag us out of our homes when we can't pay you your rent on our property? I love that look on your face. And that's exactly what I would expect from somebody covering their tracks, trying to make it sound and look good why you need our money. Wouldn't expect nothing less. There's a lot of corruption being undug throughout this country. This place is one of them. And I hope, and I'm sure, this is fixing to blow up. Are you going to come and throw me off of my property when I refuse to pay you rent? Good luck. You better bring an army.
Thank you, Ray.
Beth Fowler.
Seth Fowler.
Please forgive me.
Oh, you're good. Sloppy handwriting.
Yes, sir.
One seventy-five Bent Creek Drive. You know, guys, everywhere I look, there's items of wasteful spending, overspending. Every county department has brand-new vehicles, brand-new equipment, and you're talking about scrutinizing budgets. That's clearly not what's happening. You may scrutinize, but you sure don't turn anything down. I bought my first home in twenty-twenty, my property taxes have more than doubled since I bought that place. It's a modest house, three-bedroom, two-bath, thirteen hundred something square feet, nothing crazy. I live well below my means, but this county has consistently pushed my budget beyond its means. My mortgage has increased twenty percent, the total mortgage, just from property taxes. It's obnoxious. And, you know, me as a now-thirty-year-old, I work fifty, sixty hours a week crawling in the mud, welding, getting burnt. I work hard, I work really hard for my money. And it seems like y'all take every opportunity you can to just blow it in the wind. And that's not something I agree with. I know inflation has hit everyone really hard, it's hit me hard, it's hit everybody hard. We had to make adjustments, just like y'all need to do. I don't have anything else prepared, but we don't want this, period. And that's been very well spoken. That's all.
Thank you, Seth.
Julie Robinson.
Julie Robinson, five forty Amelia Road. I appreciate the math explanation of the impact of HB eight fifty-one, and I truly feel that no one here wants to raise our taxes. And like was said earlier, I am looking for the best deal, the long-term best deal. I am grateful for all of the county services we currently have. I am also in great support of bringing more industrial and businesses to our county because we know, if you look at the math, if we're talking about math, that is the only way we can raise tax, our tax digest. Now, unfortunately, we have to look at it that way, it's those businesses, those industrial businesses that bring in our tax digest. So I would like to see that we put a moratorium on high-density homes in village nodes so our county and our tax digest will have a chance to catch up. Because if we continue, we're going to continue to be in a deficit. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
William Slaughter.
Good evening, William Slaughter, one sixty-five Slaughter Road. I came here tonight to voice my opinion on 581, and that opinion, my opinion, is to opt out of House Bill 581. There are three reasons for that. The first reason is that it's going to suppress the, that's not, it's going to suppress the value of our houses. And because of that, like Commissioner Dutton says, because it's going to be suppressed, the value is going to be suppressed, the millage rate is going to have to be raised every year. And listening, in the bottom line, it's not going to save me any money on my taxes, my property taxes. And listening to a lot of the comments tonight, that's everyone's concern, is the property taxes. And I get it, I pay a lot too. But 581 is not going to be the savior to save us on our property taxes. And that's what, that's my point. Second point, it's going to create inequalities for the taxpayers. Say, if I have a house and I keep that house for a long period of time, neighbor comes in, purchases similar house, same neighborhood, most likely, his tax, he's going to be paying more taxes because mine's always going to be going up by the CPI for so many years. When he comes in, she comes in and purchases that house, it's going to be at the new value at that current point, the market value at that time. So potentially, they're going to be paying more taxes. They probably won't even know it, but it's not fair. Third point, and it's really the big one for me, is that the state is going to be defining what the CPI is that we have to work with. I'm for maintaining our business in-house in our county, especially our finances. And, you know, if I have a problem, if it's in-house, I know I can go to my county commissioner, I know I can come to the Board of Commissioners meeting and voice my opinion. It is easier to be heard, the larger organization that is mandating laws and restrictions or whatever, then the harder it is for your voice to be heard. I'll say all this, like I said, as a property owner, paying thousands of dollars taxes every year. I actually voted for the bill, it was around tax time, and I was thinking, oh, I'm going to save some money, so I voted for it. I shouldn't have done that, I should have known what I was voting for, but the way it was written was confusing anyway. But I voted for it, but after digging into it during the research, it's not the answer. So, and also, FLOST is one of the big things for it. Apparently, we can do that now without being in 581, so that's it.
Thank you, William.
Don Friedman.
Good evening, commissioners, my name is Don Friedman, I live-
I live at 103 Oding Cell Court. Um, I have a feeling that when the Georgia voters voted to pass House Bill 851 at the polls, they didn't know exactly what they were voting for. I assume they saw the word "save on taxes", "freeze assessed value of your property", and off they went to pass it. I did the same thing. Didn't do my due diligence to see what the heck I was voting for. So having read through this and lost brain cells that I'm not going to get back. We know why the bill was created. I'm not going to repeat it. It was already presented. The problem with the bill is to decide whether to opt in or opt out and see which is the lesser of two evils. Also remember, other factors such as the millage rate that we've talked about can still go up and increase your taxes. We've all seen the example of the $100,000 house that's now assessed at $110,000. We float the $10,000 and it's removed from your assessment and you're taxed on $100,000. However, what people fail to understand is that the county has to figure out a way to make up that tax that they're not getting. So what they come up with, they have the flossed. The flossed is a 1% sales tax that applies to food, food ingredients, any alcoholic beverages sold, and anytime the gas for your car is less than $3 a gallon, 1% tax. You can't have flossed unless you opt in. They go together. It does allow for an adjustment in the base value uh, on the rate of inflation by the state revenue commissioner using the CPI, the Consumer Price Index, which occurs in the prior year. Now, one of the things about that is the average CPI in the last four years was 5%. A lot of people don't know that. The assessed value of my home last year was 4.64%. So that didn't do me anything. That 5% already wiped out my 4.64. So you're not getting a break. There's another catch about doing improvements to the property which will increase the assessed value. It's pretty vague at best what that means. Does it mean I put a new toilet in? Does it mean I put a new room in? It doesn't say what that is. While the floating tax exemption does reward homeowners, it will cause inequities in the future if you sell the property. Because the property value baseline will be reset when it's sold. It's not transferable. Who would want to buy into that deal? Good luck selling that property. If the city does not opt in, the tax values will just carry on like they have been. I recommend the county commissioners vote to opt out, but keep your fingers crossed because the General Assembly can come back with a referendum and put a floating homestead on it and opt you in whether you wanted it or not. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Nanette Coleman.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mitch Sebal.
Mitch Sebal, 1220 Bardome. Um, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you very much for the opportunity to come and speak on House Bill 581. I came here concerned, but boy, I got a relief when I heard one of the commissioners say, "We don't want to raise your taxes." I almost went home. Uh, because I felt like that told me the answer, that the, this commission would vote to opt in. This commission has an opportunity to protect the taxpayers. They have the opportunity to make sure our taxes do not go up unnecessarily and fairly due to runaway assessments. I've heard commission, board commissioners brag all the time, "We kept your millage rate low. We kept your millage rate low." But what happens when you get your tax bill? It keeps going up because of the hidden backdoor out, uh, tax that is associated with the assessments that come along. I want to commend Representative Mathiak and Representative Kemp for bringing this to finally address the thing that people and citizens have been saying for a long time. Why do my taxes keep going up and I'm being told by my county commission that my, that my millage rate is low? And then I see the presentation of this, which is so heavily slanted. I've got three minutes to speak. I would love 30 minutes to sit down and go back and forth and challenge the points that are made. Because the presentations that are made are deeply one-sided. They don't tell the whole story. For instance, I heard a comment made about, "We can't make any cuts. Citizens, please come help us make our cuts." I thought that's what we elected them to do, is to make the cuts and do the budget. That's what, you know, I have some experience in that. I had to deal with big budgets and difficult budgets. Had to make difficult cuts in '04, '05, and through eight, '08 through '11. I know how difficult it can be. It's about the fortitude that you'll demonstrate to go and define the responsible budget that will take care of your citizens. I looked at the numbers. This county commission, excuse me, this county grew by 5% population since 2020. But the levied taxes have increased 59%. I can't believe that there is not more efficiencies in the budget with that kind of extra revenue that's come in on only 5% population. So you have the chance not to raise our taxes and to opt in. Help the property owners of Spalding County. Mr. Chairman, commissioners, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mitch. Joseph Helton.
Good evening. My name is Joseph Helton. I live at 167 Ben Creek Drive. My desire this evening is to express several thoughts to the Board of Commissioners as you and us citizens of Spalding County continue to deliberate on the subject of 581. 1 Peter 2:14 states that civil magistrates "are those who are sent by him to the punishment of evil-doers and the praise of those who do good." As a reminder, your role is to be understood as one under the sovereign rule of King Jesus. While you are placed into this position through the votes of Spalding County citizens, you are to conduct yourself and carry out your responsibilities according to the scriptures in which you are subject. Your responsibilities are to encourage good and punish evil. These commands are the left and right limits you are to reside within in order that whatever is true, good, and beautiful might thrive under your care. Anything beyond or contrary to these commands, such as theft, covetousness, or pride, not only in policy but also in heart, were contrary to God's purposes and bring about his judgment. You are to fear the Lord, love truth, and hate covetousness. Secondly, the Lord in his kindness has given you his sufficient word to equip you in your role as a civil magistrate. It states in 2 Timothy 3:16 that "all Scripture is breathed out by God, profitable correction, rebuke, and the training up of righteousness that the man of God may be complete in every good work", to include the role of a civil magistrate, "and everything therein, to include discerning what bills reward the righteous or bills that ultimately lead to magistrates becoming a terror to their people." Thirdly, be wary of presuming to know more than those under your safekeeping. Remember, you represent the citizens of Spalding County and people overwhelmingly voted for this, for this bill. While you may believe to opt out may be the most reasonable choice, it is not yours to make alone. Scriptures state in Philippians 2, 3 through 4, "Let nothing be done through selfish ambition or conceit, but in lowliness of mind let each esteem others better than himself. Let each of you look not only to his own interest but also the interests of others." Also in Proverbs 18:17, it states, "For the one who pleads his cause seemed right until his neighbor comes and examines him." In conclusion, remember, the property of Spalding County is the Lord's and everyone who dwells within it. Every beast and cattle on a thousand hills is his. It is not for you, for you to tax what is not yours to begin with and beyond the authorization given to us in the scriptures. If you've conducted your role and responsibility more for the glory of man rather than the glory of God, be the first to repent and place your trust in the Lord. That's it.
Thank you, Joseph. Randolph Hamilton.
Hi, my name is Randolph Hamilton. I live at 207 Sportway in Griffin. And I'm just going to repeat my personal situation. My assessed value of my house for the last four years has increased by 81%. And that's, that's out of control. This, this bill limits that increase. Excuse me, a little nervous. Uh, the value, the home value may help me if I sell, but um, if I stay in my home and I say, "Home, this is home", then it's just more coming out of my pocket. And I am on retired, on social security. Social Security hadn't, hadn't increased anywhere near 81%. And I watched the presentation about raising millage rates. But, but one of these days, this housing bubble is going to burst. All these inflated numbers, when there's more houses built, those numbers are going to go down. What do you do then? But, but I'll just end it with, uh, uh, I know people who say they don't vote because it doesn't matter. When Georgia voted for this bill, and Spalding County voted for this bill, if we opt out, we are proving that point. That's all.
Thank you, Randolph.
Mr. Chairman, that's all that have signed up for House Bill 581.
All right, thank you. Uh, I'd like to have a motion to close the public.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. 5-0, public hearing is now closed. At this time, I'd like to have the, uh, technical presentation by the county manager regarding House Bill 581. Dr. Ledbetter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity to share with you the technical components of House Bill 581 and what your staff has worked through with respect to uh, the impact that this legislation will have on our community and myself. Um, as a homeowner, I'm deeply concerned about the direction that we go because I, like most of my neighbors in the audience, want my taxes to go down. So I'm not presenting this in a position of picking a side. I am only making the comments with respect to factual components of what your staff has done the analysis around with respect to the legislation that's written. I do want to highlight one thing, though. I do want to say thank you to our local representatives, Representative Karamathia and Representative Beth Kemp. They are affording us an opportunity to take a real strong look at how the taxation occurs within our community because they too are concerned about lowering taxes for Georgians, whether it is in Spalding County or throughout their district. Uh, but I do want to take a few minutes and just share with you with respect to what your staff has learned. So the key, the key features of the floating homestead exemption, this is a true homestead exemption. It does not change the valuation component that has been used for probably more than a decade on how homes are valued from the tax assessor's office. It is a true exemption that is floating against a base year. And the base year, according to the way that the law is currently written, is 2024. So it would be based on last year's assessment numbers. But it also provides for, and we've heard it in some of the conversations that our neighbors have shared, it provides for a reset. So if you make the decision to sell your home, the one that is buying the home, the assessment will be based on the year prior to the purchase. So if you own your home for 10 years and the home increases year over year at, uh, what we have seen in the past, 4.5% to 7% depending on, uh, the evaluation, the valuations that have occurred, then 10 years, do the math, that gets expensive what the new owner will pay with respect to their valuation, um, component. But it also has a reset button for major alterations to the home. So if a pool is installed, then that would be considered a major renovation to the home and it would render a reset, uh, for the valuation. So it would, uh, the valuations would increase to the year prior to the pool was installed. So there are components to the provisions of this law. And, uh, as one of my neighbors indicated, that's where this example comes from. So base year of 2024, uh, value assessment of $100,000. With an assessment of a 10%, that would mean that the market value, and these, these are just for raw numbers so that we can use this as an example, that would indicate that the market value would be $110,000. The CPIU, which is the Consumer Price Index Urbanization Model that impacts 93% of the country for their inflation values, is what our Department of Revenue Commissioner is using for, uh, for the valuation, the inflation valuation. So with a 0% valuation increase, that would be $100,000. So you would receive a $10,000 floating exemption value. So you would pay, uh, on a taxable value of $100,000. Year two. So, so the $100,000 base is including all the current exemptions, which wouldn't change under this plan? That's correct. So remember, we pay 40% of the fair market value of, uh, of our homes. So that would be a $40,000 minus $2,000 for the homestead. So they would pay $38,000 of taxes uh, with whatever millage rate that the Board of Commissioners would set. Uh, year two, the market value would increase, uh, in this example to $115,000 with inflationary adjustment of 2%. So doing the math, the exemption value, $115,000 minus $102,000 would be a $13,000 floating exemption for this particular property. So again, the taxable value would be $102,000. Uh, so we would pay 40% of that 102 minus the homestead exemption and any other exemptions that we currently have in place. What this means, and one of the things that I really want us to take away from, uh, from this example slide, is that there is a reduction in net digest. So what is net digest? Net digest is gross digest. So the total amount of property across our entire community is worth. So how much is the asset worth? Uh, right now, it is $3 billion. Please bear with me and I will give you the exact number. My hands are going to work. $3,137,342,592 as of 2024. So gross digest minus all exemptions equals net digest. So we have a reduction in net digest based on this number. And that's going to be important in just a few minutes and I'll come back to that. So please bear with me for just a minute. So potential impacts, uh, of the net digest reduction and creates some reduced property tax revenue. This could create a slower growth within the community as we would have less funding for, uh, construction of infrastructure. Uh, it, it could create some, uh, some challenges with bringing in development as we would not be able to invest in that level of, uh, development. Impact on homestead exemptions, uh, the increased tax burden of non-exempt properties to compensate for the reduced revenue for primary residences. House Bill 581 transfers the increased taxes onto commercial properties and those who are not homesteaded. So businesses and renter, um, uh, neighbors, those who are renting within the community would see, could see a potential increase in their rent. Businesses would increase, could increase their, uh, cost of goods and services because they're going to pass along those additional costs on to the customer. So those are, those are thoughts that we need to consider.
Dr. Ledbetter, uh, so everybody knows, so the, the slides are on our website. So if you're trying to capture, copy or something, uh, they're already there. They're at the very top of our website. You punch the button and the whole thing will come up to you so you can look at it again.
That is correct.
Later on. Thank you.
So this has an impact regardless of where you are in your journey along life. Because we have those who rent within our communities who are, uh, young in life, uh, who we have, uh, those who rent who are older in life. So regardless of where you are, we have those who, uh, purchase here locally at our businesses at any stage of life. So there, there will be an impact. But I do want to call your attention to the last comment that's listed on this slide. One of the things that the homestead exemption does is it, it encourages homeownership. And as one of our neighbors indicated earlier, the homeownership is, uh, set up with this legislation to encourage those to come to our community but stay in that home for a very long time because that's how you keep your tax level low. If you make a transition from one home to another, then you're making a transition to a higher tax bracket based on the reset, uh, position of the law. I do now want to shift gears just a little bit. We've talked about floating local option sales tax. So the floating local option sales tax, we're using an, uh, the, the same analog. We're using this, the similar way of. We're using the similar way of calculating our floating local option sales tax as we do for our local option sales tax that we currently pay at the cash register. So the county receives one cent for the local option sales tax at the register. And over the course of the last five years, the information that's listed on the screen calculates calendar year of those local option sales taxes, the revenue that comes into our county for paying for general fund, maintenance and operation. I do want to call your attention to 2023 and 2024. In, at the end of 2022, the state of Georgia asked every county across the state and every city to renegotiate their local option sales tax allocation distribution, how much we shared between Spalding County and the City of Griffin. And during that time, we had lots of discussion. We negotiated in good faith with the City of Griffin and we negotiated a one-half percent increase over the course of five years coming to Spalding County. So we added more revenue coming in by half a percentage point year over year for the next, for five years, starting from 2023. Well, in 2023, the number that you see on the screen indicates that the annual growth rate, 4% increase for our local option sales tax, actually reduced from 7.22 to 4.9. We received another half a percentage point increase in our distribution for the county in 2024. And again, we saw a reduction in the growth rate for local option sales tax. So why is that important? I want to show it to you in a little different way. So if you look at year over year from 2019 to 2025, the growth rate and percent increase for our local option sales tax has decreased year over year. So staff really took a look at what was going on. There are some things that I would ask you to consider. One, in 2020, COVID hit. So monies came local for individuals to utilize during the time that we were shut in during COVID. So a lot more money was spent during the 2020 and early 2021 time period. But we are seeing now more of a stagnation, a plateau, if you will, with respect to our local option sales tax. So staff has looked at 30 years worth of data, month over month, for the local option sales tax. And what we're seeing is that, on average, every 10 years, you see a slight decline in the amount of taxation that we bring in for local option sales tax. And then it will slowly start growing back up over time. But it's interesting because we are seeing the same increase and decrease motion, the same wave line, if you will, for our local option sales tax. And it does appear that the numbers are plateaued and we are expecting that it will continue to plateau over the next couple of years if history repeats itself. That said, if we, if the board decides to opt in and the voters make the decision at referendum in November to vote in a floating local option sales tax, we could expect about 8.6, thereabout, about 8.6 million dollars in local option sales tax that would go toward a floating local option sales tax for the reduction of property tax.
But that's the total. That has to be split because that's in the city, right?
No, that's our split. That's our split. Yes, sir. So homesteaded properties within the county, there are 33,344 total parcels. There are 25,316 residential parcels. 13,000 of those are homesteaded, 11,252 are non-homesteaded properties. So there are 45% non-homesteaded properties countywide. This does include inside the City of Griffin. One of the things that staff did as an additional analysis of these figures, we are not suggesting that all 11,252 properties are rental properties. It does appear that there are some that are second homes or some of our community that have just not yet filed for homestead exemption. And we would encourage those who have not filed to please come and file for that homesteaded property exemption. Homesteaded properties, the exemptions, again, there's 13,828. This makes up, this makes up a total of 41.5% of our total digest revenue. So 41.5% of our revenue that comes into our county to manage our general fund, maintenance and operation fund comes from homesteaded properties. So as you can see, the inflationary increase rate over the last 10 years has been, on average, 8.65% over the 25,000 properties. And we're seeing, on average, about 10 years, sorry, 10% of our community turns over. They sell their home and leave and we get new neighbors every single year. So on average, about 10% new people coming into our community. There was a comment that was made earlier with respect to 5% growth since 2020. That is correct. The US Census Department indicates that we are growing at a rate of 1.34% annually. This year, we are 70,884 citizens who live inside of Spalding County. So let's get into a little bit about the school tax exemptions. For those who are 65 to 69, they receive a $10,000 school tax exemption. There are 1,428 people who participate in that exemption. 70 to 74, there are 1,583 who participate in a $20,000 exemption. And 2,780 who are 75 and older receive a $30,000 exemption on their school tax. This board is not responsible for school tax, millage rate or school taxes. But I did want to place this slide on for one purpose and one purpose only. If we have neighbors in our community who have not filed for the school tax homestead exemption, please go and do that. Take advantage of the exemption that you have in front of you. This is a total number of school tax exemptions of 5,791 of the 13,828, which means that there are 42% of our community who are homesteaded that are 65 and older. So I did pull this slide off the Department of Revenue website. There are a lot of words and it's very small and I recognize that. But it really highlights the fact of how to calculate the revenue millage rate with respect to our budget needs. So I wanted to work to make this a little bit cleaner. So here is the clean slide. Net digest times millage rate equals revenue. So from, from my seat, really the only side of the equation that I really pay very close attention to is the revenue side. I'm working very diligently to drive the revenue side down as low as I can possibly get it. And the reason for that is because it is directly associated with the net digest and the millage rate. And the left side of the equation is just a math component where if the net digest is reduced, then the millage rate goes up in order to satisfy the revenue requirements. Conversely, if the net digest increases, the millage rate decreases for the same level of revenue. So it is a math issue that we're dealing with. And I wanted to show where we are with respect to the numbers that we have, the model that we have built for taking a very, very close look at House Bill 581. So we actually sat down and we are looking at comparing apples to apples to apples. So the assumption is that we maintain the same number of employees. So we add no additional employees. We have a 2.5% annual pay increase. This is the exact same pay increase that is offered to our disabled veterans. There was a little bit more of a pay increase for, or there seems to be a little bit more of a pay increase this year for Social Security. And then the same level of annualized growth rate of 5.6%. This annualized growth rate is the number of new developments that are coming into our community. Should you reduce the annualized growth rate from the equation, the millage rate would actually increase because we rely on a steady level of growth in order to maintain a very steady millage rate. But one of the things that stood out to all of us as we were examining this was that opting out, you can see where the millage rate takes us. This is not using a 7, 8 or 9% increase in the valuations each year. It was using the same rate as last year, which was 4.5%. So the 4.5% actually drives the millage rate down, which is what this Board of Commissioners have been doing year over year for the last three years. Opting in with FLOST does take us to 12.56 in 2027 because we do have to have one full year of revenue coming in before we can place that money into the position of reducing our millage rate. But one thing that you will notice is that the millage rate there opting in actually goes above the opt-out model. The opting in without FLOST, if our voters make the decision that we will not add an additional penny to the cash register, then the millage rate would stay at 15.921. And that's adding no additional people and making no additional adjustments. Again, if we, if we bring in development at a faster pace than 5.6, then those numbers would be adjusted accordingly. All three would come down. If we slow the growth down, then those millage rate numbers would need to go up in order to satisfy the revenue requirements.
But this also doesn't take into account, with a 5.6 growth rate, we're going to need more firemen and more sheriff's deputies. This is just keeping the current level of deputies.
That's correct.
Not accounting for the actual increase in services that would have to go along with the 5.6% growth rate.
That is correct. So I did want to showcase the five-year tax levy so that we can see that year over year, we bring it, bring the millage rate down just a little. One of the things that you will notice is that the net taxes percent increase in 2024 shows 7.2. The average increase for the valuations for the home, and I know that we have one-offs that are extreme one way or the other, but the average for the 25,000 parcels that are currently sitting with a home on them averaged 4.5%. The additional roughly 3% growth rate that you're seeing, the 7.2 accounts for new houses that were built within our community or new developments that came in. So that is included in that 7.2. The 7.2 is not the total for each homeowner. There are other areas that we have to consider. Some of the other things that we looked at, examples of cases where property tax limitations and shifts to sell tax revenues have impacted local services. So California's Proposition 13, Florida's Save Our Homes Amendment, and Texas' property tax reform, all three of these are areas where they have used a similar legislation such as House Bill 581 across the country. Some have worked well, some have not worked well. But we did take a look because we wanted to understand where the pitfalls were with respect to moving forward should the board decide to opt in and where the good graces were for each of those as well. Special tax districts, our special tax districts are impacted. Commissioner Dutton, you just highlighted one and I'll jump ahead to the next slide. The special service district for our Spalding County Fire District tax will be impacted by this should we decide to opt in for House Bill 581. One thing to consider, FLOST does not apply to our special tax district for our fire district tax. So there's no additional funding coming from that one cent penny sales tax at the register that we could offset here. So the only option for increasing revenue for the special service district would be increases in millage rate. The millage rate for our fire district tax is capped at five mils. So we would move very quickly toward that five mil cap should we make the decision, or should the board make the decision to increase the number of firefighters from two to three for fire service. This is our third and final public hearing this evening. But I do want to, I want to stop for just a second and go back to this particular slide. One of the comments that was made by Sue Fowler this evening, and I do want to give her credit for it because I thought she had a very good comment. She was indicating that making a suggestion for a hybrid approach to lowering our millage tax, I thought was just an absolutely fabulous comment, one that we have shared here even during our second public hearing. Again, I want to give kudos to our state representatives with respect to forcing us to take a moment and consider how we could reduce taxes for our community in maybe a little different way. So could we impose a SPOST for our community, a special local option sales tax that would reduce the millage rate for homeowners, for businesses and for those who rent? My position is I believe we can. Staff has run this through our council and asked that question specifically. And the answer was, yes, we could make a hybrid approach and afford our community the opportunity to pay an extra penny to utilize a quasi-FLOST penny at the cash register and afford our community an opportunity to drive our taxes down based on a special local option sales tax. I think that would be an awesome opportunity for us. And we could do a hybrid approach based on what House Bill 581 is bringing to the table. Commissioners, that's all of my presentation this evening. I would entertain any questions.
So we could, we could, the SPOST from 2016 was a bunch of wants. You know, it was a bunch of neat stuff. Pickleball courts are great for people who play pickleball. Aquatic center is great for people who swim. But it's a bunch of really expensive stuff that, none of which was necessary. It was a bunch of wants. But we could do, and it would be up to the voters, of course, for a SPOST that would work, at least in part, like a FLOST and say, hey, we, you know, in paying this sales tax penny, we can lower by this percentage or, you know, whatever of the, of the millage rate. That's the thing that we can do.
Yes, sir.
Is there a way? This might not be the time to talk about it. We were talking earlier about getting the industry here. And the industry can't come until there's sewer and water. Is there a way to use some of that SPOST as well to put that sewer and water out? Because it's going to cost millions. Which then, instead of lowering the millage rate while the SPOST is going on for that, the five or six years, if that industry is there, it would allow us to lower the millage rate for forever, so long as they're paying taxes. Could we, could we do both in the same SPOST?
Actually, yes.
Okay. In a SPOST, the FLOST, you have to wait a year and collect before it would affect the millage rate. Do you have to wait a year on a SPOST before it could lower the millage rate?
I believe with the staff that you currently have in place that we could work through reducing some of the millage rate faster than we could through the FLOST.
Through the FLOST, okay.
Anything else?
We should, we should explore. That's a great idea. What, I do have one more question and this might be better for... What, I do have one more question, and this might be better for the representatives that will speak next. When we talked about you're going into HB 581, the, the base value gets locked unless you move, sell, or like do an improvement. You guys used the pool example. When, when does that lock in? So if we, if we opt in, does that count starting like July 1st, like on the fiscal year? And so it's like, people should rush now and grab pools if we opt in? You know what I'm saying? Or is that already, is that window already closed? You know what I'm saying? Like, do we know that answer?
I don't have the exact answer for that. I do know that the base year is listed as 2024. So I would make the argument that the way that the Commissioner of the Department of Revenue is going to put out a ruling for that is that any improvements made since 2025, January 1st, 2025 and beyond would count as a reset.
So if someone's using the same example, put in a pool in January, they wouldn't qualify that because it would be the 2025?
Move to 2025.
Okay, anything else, sir?
I wanted to just have you to clarify something. There were a couple of statements where I, I think someone alluded to the fact that, that we were forgiving taxes. I, I don't remember that since I've been here in 20 years that this board has ever forgiven taxes.
That's correct.
So can you please explain to people if, obviously that is what's happening, but we don't have control over that. And the other thing that I wanted to share is that from, from all of this, what I see as the problem is the formula that the state of Georgia or the Department of Revenue uses to help the Board of Assessors to come up with property values. Because, you know, people are saying my property taxes are going up. They're coming up, they're coming up. I don't, you know, I don't, I'm looking at Karen. Not trying to, to talk about anybody, but, but I'm saying as long as the assessment value keeps rising.
From the state.
We're never going to be able to fix what we were doing. And in the conversation that we had today, where you actually shared that for multiple years, because our Tax Assessor's Office was trying to keep it low, we were almost at the point of being fined because we didn't get between that 36 and 42 number that the state is required. So, you know, if, if there were legislation, that would be the legislation I think needs to be fixed. How it is that, that the Tax Assessor's Office is having to raise the assessments based on whatever the formula is that's being presented to them, the state. I don't know the details of it. But conversely, if the assessments weren't going up every year, then there would not be the expectation that your property taxes are going to automatically go up. So I don't think the answer is not necessarily at our level. The answer is how you stop assessments that, you know, from where I'm sitting, the assessments that have happened over the last four years don't measure to the assessments that have happened over the last 30 years. And when you look at it on a graph during 20 to 2024, it's like way up. I call it a COVID fluke. I don't know what else to call it because, you know, a loaf of bread was $4. Or a tire that you normally pay $90 for was 250. So, so we're in a place right now that I just feel like because the numbers that are happening are not what I would call natural numbers, I'm not comfortable with not being in control of how we move forward as a county. I, I feel like the work that was done, while it may help other people, the real work needs to be done with helping the Board of Assessors not have to raise assessment values because the state says that you got to be in this percentile number.
Yeah, and those jumps are coming mandated by the state. They send us a letter that says, you got to raise the average assessment by XYZ or get fined into the dirt.
That is correct. All right, you asked a lot of questions.
Okay, go just to the first one.
Well, I, I would, but you, you've lost me in the second question. So I, I need to go to the second question, and then you're going to have to ask the first one. I, I do want to highlight what's on the screen. So this is the Social Security Cost of Living Adjustment for '25 through '24. And if you go back and look at the Consumer Price Index U, which is the urbanization, it's going to be really close to what this assessment is telling us. But I want to highlight one thing. 2022, which is what you're talking about, that 8.7% increase, and then the 3.2%, and then the 2.5%. So we are in a lag. We as government are in a lag from the index because we're always a year behind. We're using 2024 assessments to assess for '25. We're using '25 assessments to assess for '26. So we're always in a lag. But these are the, these are the inflationary cost for Social Security. And it's interesting, if you look through it back in 2015, yeah, it was very low. Remember, we were recovering from the 2018 bubble bust that occurred that took almost seven years to fully recover from. And, and we've gone through another inflationary component where our index is really highlighting that we have a lot of inflationary components applying not only to us as a government, but to me and my house. When I go to Kroger, it's expensive. When I go to the, the gas station, it's expensive. And I, I do hear our neighbors have the conversation that we're on fixed income. Our, our new employees are on fixed incomes too. They're living basically from paycheck to paycheck. And 40% of our new employees are renters. So they, they are, they're struggling a little bit. And we heard it from the young lady that spoke just a bit ago, how she's an engineer and she's 24 and she's in her first brand, her first home. She purchased her first home and she's living from paycheck to paycheck. Inflation is expensive. It costs us a lot. So that, that's an indication that we need to really do what our neighbors have asked us to do, which is sharpen our pencil and make sure that we're cutting as much out as we can possibly cut out. And, and your first question?
Was that, the, there was the, I don't want to say, the allegation that we have forgiven, we, we as a board.
Pilot. All right, so, so you're talking, yeah, you're talking about the payment in lieu of taxes, which is offered through our Industrial Development Authority. So for, for the IDA, and our council is here, and she can correct me when I, when I misspeak. Our IDA actually provides pilots for manufacturing and industrial based on the number of employees that they bring in. They do start at 100% for the first year, and then they tier that down 10% year over year until year 10. So on average, it, we, they, we receive about 50% of the taxes for the county on that payment in lieu of taxes manufacturing company over the course of 10 years.
And it's based on job creation and also capital investment. And our Industrial Development Authority, unlike many across the country, we do not abate school taxes at all for any manufacturing company that comes here.
That's correct. And I do want to highlight one other point. So for warehouses, warehouses do not receive a pilot. They do not receive any form of tax abatement. So the first day that they open, they are eligible for, for taxes. And the reason for it is because they have transitory inventory. So they're bringing inventory in, stacking it up, and then they, they redistribute those, those inventory items back out either that day or within 72 or, or 84 hours. So they are paying taxes the first day that they come in. So warehouses are not a bad thing because we get tax money immediately. Manufacturing and industrial is not a bad thing because they're putting people to work in high-paying jobs.
But some of those pilot payments are pretty substantial. I mean, six figures like a year, and then it keeps going. And then it slowly switches from pilot to actual just regular property taxes.
That is correct.
That's correct.
Caterpillar's now done with their pilot, right?
Yes, Caterpillar's pilot's been finished for years, and they've been paying their full taxes for many years.
But we don't have any say-so over that.
No. That is, that is through the Industrial Development Authority.
That happens outside of the, the will well of what it is that we're responsible for.
That's correct.
That is correct, yes, ma'am. All right.
Commissioner Bold, any comments?
I don't have no questions, but I have a comment. I'm not going to be like Dutton, I ain't going to use a bunch of long, boring, catchy words. It reminds, this reminds me of a story back when I was a kid. I went to go buy my first truck. I went down to Chronic Chevrolet, highest place you can go anyways. But I, I picked out this brand-new, bright red Duramax diesel truck. Sat down, we worked out the payment. I was so excited. And then my dad looked at me and said, "Son," he said, "you might want to call and see how much your insurance is going to be." Well, I called. Well, insurance is going to be almost a full payment of the truck. So it looked good on the front side. It just didn't work out for me at the time. It feels like a game of tennis between the local governments and the state. And I love my state representatives, I love them. We play this blame game all the time. Reason your taxes go up because of the county. Well, the reason our taxes go up is because of the state. We need to get together and work something out that's actually going to work. And the only thing I see is a fair tax, like James brought up earlier. The state does wonderful things, but it's like, two years ago, we got this $500 rebate. Well, what happened with your valuations? Shot sky-high, smoke and mirrors. It just kind of took your attention off that. And then, oh, we gave you all $500 rebate. It's the county's fault our taxes went up. Well, it's not our fault. We don't have a say. I mean, we're trying, and we're dropping the millage rates, but the evals keep going up. And until we fix that, I mean, it's, I mean, I, it's smoke and mirrors, like Mr. Middlebrook said, it's smoke and mirrors. It looks good, and got a catchy phrase to it, but it just ain't going to work out for Spalding County. It may work out for Fayette, it may work out for Fulton, but from what I'm seeing, I'm just an old country boy. I'm just like any of y'all. It just, it just don't make sense. The math don't add up. I think, short term, you'll be, it's okay. But four or five years from now, we're going to be in a mess. Right now, until it's fixed, and I hate everything's being rushed right now. We got the deadline March 1st. I wish we had time to really sit down and come up. Because there, there's some solutions there, and they've got some good ideas they're trying to work through, but it's just not happening fast enough. Because I mean, we got to make a decision like now on this, so. And I'm willing to live with it. I mean, I'm, I'm here for four years. If it don't work out, kick my ass out. So, I mean, but I'm willing to take one for y'all on this.
Okay, Commissioner Watts?
Yes, my problem is opting in, I'm seeing that taxes are going to go up. Opting out, I'm seeing that we're going to be able to bring the millage rate down. So that's what I'm stuck on. And I, I don't want to give you guys false hope and say, hey, we're going to raise it, you're going to lower your taxes. And we don't. But truly, opting out, that's the only way I'm seeing that the taxes are going to go down.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, one other thing. Steve, one of the things that I found out today was that there was a requirement for a, a three-year county-wide assessment. And what I can share is that we have been doing that for the last 15 years. It cost a lot of money, but we have managed to go through and look at every parcel throughout the county for the same reasons that people were complaining that their property taxes, their assessments were going up. Again, that's a huge part of how we can fix this. But until the, the Office of Tax Assessors have a different formula to work from, they're going to be required to do what the law says in terms of figuring out tax assessments.
Oh, that's what you're going to say. Go ahead.
Um, I, I also wanted to say that I feel like I've seen a lot of legislation come through here. And this is one of the few that I've seen that gives you an option, you voted for an option to not do it.
Yeah.
Or giving the Board of Commissioners an option to not do it. As I, as I said before, the decreases that we have made thus far in our millage rate have, you know, for us, it has been continuous. However, we're fighting against a rising property assessment value. So unless we're able to get a better grasp on controlling that particular thing, the only thing that we can do is look for financial opportunities to drop the millage rate through some option, local option, sales tax collection. I know we can't get the, the host, but something, you know, my question is, why didn't they just fix the host? You know?
Right.
But maybe there wasn't enough time, I don't know. But it just, I don't, I don't, I just don't see that us giving up our power as a county is going to be the answer to changing our game plan that we've been using for the last five years on this level. I can't speak for the level for the, the Board of Assessors, but I want to speak to it. I just don't know who to speak to, Karen, about that happening. That's it.
Okay, anything else?
I've got one more thing. So the, we spoke a few years ago with some of the Board of Assessors folks about what it would cost to have an independent group come in and do an independent assessment. I mean, it was like $7 million or something for, for, I mean, if I'm remembering correctly, for an independent group to come in and like check all the assessments for every single plot. You know, this was 33,000 or 35,000 or something. That, that might be something to look into. Because there are, there are some, some plots in Spalding County that, you know, not, not to, too many details of, of, you know, clients and stuff, but there, through a case, we learned today about a, a lot that's assessed at around $10,000 here in Spalding County. But it generates $5,000 for the landlord every year. But it's assessed as if its value's only 10. But if I've got an asset that's making me $5,000 a year, it's worth more than $10,000, like that. And so, you know, the, the person that was interacting with it came and said, "I tried to buy this for double its value," and they said, "No, I'm making $5,000 a year." So that's not, that's not really its value because it's an asset. Whereas like my home, you know, it costs me a bunch to cut the grass, and it costs me a bunch every time I got to fix the roof. It's not making me money. But these landlords, this is almost a commercial property. This is an investment property that they're making money. Is there not a way to change the way that its value is assessed? Not as like, well, what's the property, you know, this parcel cost? But like, hey, if you owned a hot dog stand and it made you $5,000 a year, then its value is, is some number. You see what I'm saying? Is there not a way to, to do that?
Yes, there is. We can do a reassessment. And one of the considerations that staff would like to bring before you, maybe in a workshop so that we can have the discussion, is a reassessment where we start with our commercial properties and we do a full reassessment there and get a real good feel of what a reassessment would look like for our community.
Anything else for Dr. Ledbetter?
All right. Next on the agenda is an opportunity for the state representatives to come forward, both Beth Camp and Karen Mathiak. Both of these are chairman of committees at the state level. I am absolutely pleased beyond belief that the state representatives would come cocking to my peers around the state and asking, would your representatives come and talk about 581? They almost laughed at me and said, "You're kidding. They're not coming, especially in session, to be able to talk with us and take the heat and see what's going on." So both of you, I want to say thank you. This is hard to do, I understand it. We want to hear your thoughts. You've heard both the citizens' comments. You've heard the county commissioners' comments. You've heard Dr. Ledbetter's comments. I'm sure it looks different from the Gold Dome, but we would like to hear your thoughts. We're going to vote tonight, and your thoughts are invaluable before we make the vote, please.
Well, thank you for allowing us to be here. My name is Beth Camp, and I am new to Spalding County. I just began representing you on January the 13th. So thank you for allowing me to do that. That being said, I was part of creation of HB 581. And the reason being, I had the privilege of sitting on a tax Ad Valorem board. It was a working group, and we met for two days. In that two days' time period, we had people from all over the state come. And one thing that kept being mentioned over and over is the fact the assessments had gone up. And they have. And they have. I work in real estate. I know everyone's value has gone up on their property. The question started being, well, is your local taxation board rolling the mileage rate back? Not always. And they would say, but my taxes went up, but my mileage rate didn't change. And we would say, and I would, you know, kind of lead them after, you know, had discussion with different people to the fact, and and people started recognizing it's because the assessments went up. And if your assessment went from uh, using number, round numbers, a hundred thousand to a hundred and twenty thousand, but your tax digest, your mileage rate did not change, but your digest did. You know, um, Steve Ledbetter had a wonderful formula, you know, about, um, your digest and the mileage rate equals, you know, what you're operating your county on. And and you had arrows for the, um, assessment mileage rate going down. Those arrows can go in both directions. And that was kind of the purpose of five eighty-one. It's more transparency. If your taxes go up, it's because your mileage rate went up. Um, because your assessments would have a little more stability. That's kind of the brainchild of the whole thing. I understand, and based on the the very extensive documentation, and thank you for putting that, you guys just need more money. Long and short of it. You don't have enough money and you need money and and I understand that. And so you're trying to figure out at this point in time, do you opt in to to five eighty-one, which has some unknown variables? Or do you stick with what you know because you predictively believe you're going to end up with X at the end? I mean, that's really boiling it down to kindergarteners terms, but that's what I've seen in the past two hours of presentations. Now, there are a lot of opportunities. If you honestly feel like five eighty-one is not going to work because you want to keep a mileage rate more stable and stagnant than the assessments, then we can talk about some local legislation. No one on your board has presented me with any local legislation that you think would work. I do not know, quite honestly, I have not seen, and I am the chair for local legislation. I have never seen something come through that is strictly a splopped type thing to run a county. I have not seen that. I need to talk to legislative council to even see if that's legal under the Georgia Constitution. I mean, there are a lot of things that I think are a good idea to find out they're not constitutionally sound. And so that's something certainly to discuss. But, you know, everyone's here tonight because their taxes went up and they're not happy their taxes went up. They voted for five eighty-one that for resolution one because they believed it would bring some stability to their taxes. I get it. I'm not particularly happy, um, hearing everyone not liking it, but the reality is everyone's not going to agree with everyone all the time. And if you honestly feel that your board cannot move forward without its assessments going up and capitalizing on those assessments, because end over end, you need millions and millions more dollars annually. Um, I did see that your budget's seventy-one million. Is that correct? And of that seventy-one million for twenty twenty-five, only forty-three million were property taxes? Others came from fees and various other forms of taxation. That being said, you know, there might be some opportunities to look at some other things to do, but again, I haven't heard from anybody. And I've heard from other taxation bodies throughout the state with ideas for local legislation. So I'm very curious on what you would like to put together for local legislation, especially knowing that we're a part-time legislature and we will be out of service as of April the fourth, unless the governor brings us back in for tort reform. But during that time, we won't be able to pass local legislation because we'll be stranglehold by just that one thing. Taxpayer relief is something that we take serious at the state of Georgia. I was proud to vote yes on a bill that's going to reduce your state income tax and the corporate income tax from five point three nine to five point one nine. We understand that inflation is hitting everybody. And we understand also that Georgians make good decisions when money's in their pocket. And so we fully support in the General Assembly moving forward with that. That being said, being cognitive and aware of what the citizens are saying regarding taxation is also an important factor. And so whatever decision you make tonight, I hope that you definitely realize that sixty-three percent of Georgians voted yes on resolution one. And I'm going to turn it over to Karen.
Thank you. I do live in this county, at the north end of the county. So this is near and dear to my heart. There's a gentleman in the back that wanted to say something about, well, when our property goes up and we sell it for more, of course, our taxes are going to go up. That's, that's the long and the short of everything that we're talking about tonight. There's some things that 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 were said that the state mandated that I I'm in disagreement with you, that we did not mandate that. This, this is an option. We listen to our citizens. Everybody wants tax reform. And I think when Beth talked about even the index coming down just that little bit, everybody talks about fair tax, fair tax, fair tax. Remember that fifteen, twenty years ago? We've been doing that little by little by little, and it's working. It's working. So I think when we start looking at the difference between taxation and some of the things that are attached to it, I think we have to make wise decisions. That's what we were tasked to do, and now it's, it's at the local level. So that's, at the end of the day, that's where we're at. Um, I hope that that you will take that very seriously because all of us want tax relief.
It would be nice if, if the opportunity that we have, because this is the first time that I've seen Beth Camp in the, in this room, it would be nice if going forward, someone would have some conversation with others on the board other than Sun City, because they are not the entirety of Spalding County. So in order for us to give you a suggestion, you need to be available for us to be able to give you that.
And you know what? I think I am available.
No, I'm not talking about you. I'm talking about your colleagues. And and I'm, and and I'm not mad at you about it, but I'm saying when you create legislation and nobody in the community knows about it, but the group that wants it, it makes it difficult for us to defend and it makes it difficult for us to explain to people because we don't have any input in what it is that you present to represent.
Well, that's how, but that's how legislation comes down.
I understand that, but I'm just sharing with you what my concern is as a commissioner, when you ask us to offer legislation or suggestions for how to fix things. It's apparent to me that you don't care what we think because you didn't ask us anything. So and I'm not mad at you, Karen. I know what you do. I know what y'all do at the state. I'm just saying to you, as a commissioner, I don't feel like we have a relationship with y'all that that will net that kind of output.
Okay, well, I'm, I will apologize for that, but I also feel like I'm very accessible. I think that we are. And we had to start somewhere. When the citizens asked us to, for tax relief, we had to start somewhere, just like at the state property taxes. So we're starting somewhere. So I, that's what I can offer you tonight, and I hope that we will be able to find a good solution for that tax relief. Because at the end of the day, we, wait a minute, we want, we want people to enjoy living in Spalding County. We've got some issues. We've, we had that conversation this afternoon. So we know that we have, we have some issues that we have to address. Maybe this will be the beginning.
I'm sorry I did not have a chance to speak with you regarding this, but I have spoken to at least two members of your board regarding HB five eighty-one, more than once. So I am terribly sorry that we did not have an opportunity to discuss it beforehand. But, um, can I just address one of the comments you made earlier about the, the state and the assessments? The reason why the state put in in two thousand and ten, which I was not a legislator at that point in time, um, the reason why the state put in that you have to be within the guideline of thirty-eight to forty-two percent or thirty-six to forty-four percent, depending on um, which metrics you're looking at, is because they had an issue throughout the state of people not actually assessing properties properly. And that is an issue, if you live in in Pike County or Lamar County or Upton County or Spalding County, your property should be very accurate on the assessment for the county in which you live. And there are other services in other counties that might make that property more valuable. Um, for example, a, a fifteen-hundred square foot Peachtree City is going to be worth more than a fifteen-hundred square foot in Griffin. It's just a reality, um, because it's based on square footage. But in two thousand and ten, we had a recession for a number of years at that point, three years. And counties were assessing higher than what the properties were selling for. There were a lot of foreclosed properties. So they put that into place so that people would be properly assessed on their values. And it works in both directions, though. As assessments go up, as values go up, it also makes sure that the county is getting the appropriate amount of funding from their digest to make sure that they're not having to raise their village rate to twenty mills, to make sure they can pay their bills. So that's, that's when all that happened was two thousand and ten. And, um, the Department of Revenue does manage it and they do fine counties for not, um, assessing in a timely manner.
That was part of our issue too within Spalding County because we were so far behind in those assessments being at that index. And that, when I heard people talk about their, um, assessments going up eighty-one percent, that scared me. I thought, oh, my God, that can't be right. Part of it was because it was so low that.
And it's not, and we're not picking on Spalding County. We just happen to be in Spalding County right now. There's a hundred and fifty-eight other counties that have similar issues. And I can tell you my property value personally doubled from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-one. So doubled. So I'm, I'm saying this is an issue across the state. And so again, going back to what I said to start with, if this is not the right approach for Spalding County, let's sit down and have a conversation about what is the right approach to Spalding County for taxpayer relief.
I want, I want to speak to that. When, unfortunately, in in the modern age, a lot of times, if you go to a doctor for an issue, they go, well, here, take this pill. And then six months later, you go, I have this issue. They go, oh, that's a side effect from the pill we gave you. Here's another pill to fix that side effect. And then six months later, and and it seems like that's sort of what's happening here, this law of unintended consequences. Hey, we created this thing in twenty-ten and now we're finally reaching sort of some bad part of that fallout. So instead of fixing that, we're going to give you a new pill. You know what I mean? And it, it. I'm not saying that it's not, it's not, that you're not trying to do the right thing and 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 lower the tax burden for everybody. We're all on the same page there. Um, and I, and I do want to give you some, both of you, some, uh, just excellent kudos on your work in school choice. Uh, you guys are just champions of that and I just love it, especially here in Spalding County. It's so necessary and so needed. Uh, what you guys are doing for senior tax relief, uh, specifically here in Spalding County, like couldn't be more proud that you guys are legislators. Um, and then of course, uh, you're, you're both helping ending the, the unconstitutional, uh, camera privateering that's happening across the state. It, but it seems, and Representative Camp, what you, what you said was that we wanted, there's those two metrics. And right now, they can, they can both move. One moves with sort of the market forces or or ideally should move with the market forces as, you know, the property values go up sort of naturally.
Ideally.
Uh, ideally, that's how it should go. Um, and in some places across the state, that's certainly not the case. I I won't put nefarious, uh, what, never, never, never commit, uh, to to evil what you can, uh, uh, account with incompetence. You know, it's, it might, it might be either one, but whatever it is, there was some shenanigans going on, uh, 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 in other parts of the state. Um, but it, it seems like in locking in one of those, you're purposefully switching it over so that it seems almost like the intent was to make it so that we have to raise the mileage rate every year.
Correct, because it's more transparent.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that the intent of five, five eighty-one is to make the county board raise the mileage rate every year. So I'm not, I didn't want to be making that up.
If you need more funding above CPI in what your, um, non-residential, your residential non-homestead in your corporate or commercial properties. Um, if you need more revenue than what they're garnering through the normal average assessment that we discussed, then yes, it would be raising mileage rates because you have mileage rate hearings. You don't have property assessment hearings. Individuals have to come individually and challenge their assessments.
But we know that the state pegged that CPI increase this year at, at zero.
Well, that's because it's base year zero. So whatever your assessment is this year, it's zero because why would you add CPI to the base year?
But wasn't the base year twenty twenty-four?
My understanding is the base year is twenty twenty-five.
Twenty twenty-four.
Four, okay. Then it's going to be whatever it was the end of twenty twenty-four.
With a zero adjustment.
With zero adjustment for this year, correct.
So effectively, there's no way to not, other than closing firing sta-, fire stations and and cutting county services.
You could increase your mileage rate.
Without increasing it, that's what I'm saying. So like, effectively, the intent of the bill and the way that it's worked would require us to raise the mileage.
Yes, and there are other smaller. No, 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 no. It's a smaller, it's a smaller municipalities are doing it. Um, Upton County is going to to opt in, which um, I'm kind of excited about because this is a great opportunity for them. Um, but again, assessments matter and they're very similar in the fact that they have a large rental population. Um, they don't have as much industry as some of our neighbors and they have very little commercial. Um, they have a Walmart in Ingles. That's pretty much the extent of their retail. So, um.
Well, I just, I just wanted to make sure that I wa-, I was reading it correct because I'm not, I'm not trying to make you guys into bad guys. The, the, the point was, like you just said, to shift it from evaluations to mileage rate. But it seems like what we all voted on last year was pitched as tax relief. But it really wasn't tax relief. It was shifting from assessment increases to mileage rate increases.
Well, to my knowledge, there were no lobbyists behind this whatsoever.
No, I.
So any, any information anyone gleaned from it was going to be from a litany of news articles. And we can all take news articles with a grain of salt, grain of sand, whichever one you prefer, um, because they're not always completely accurate. The question was, do you want the General Assembly, or I'm sorry, do you want the assessments frozen with a base year and use an inflationary factor going forward to determine property taxes? That was the question. And there were a lot of things gleaned from that, for, I'm understanding now, that were not completely accurate. But taxation bodies need a definitive amount of money. It was not ever intended as a bait and switch or a smoke and mirrors, as it was alluded to earlier. It was saying, do you want your assessments to be frozen and use Consumer Price Index or another inflationary factor going forward? So again, it would require taxation bodies, if you need more money, to raise mileage rates, which is a more transparent way of knowing if your taxes went up or not. You could go to the mileage rate hearings and tell them why they shouldn't do it. I have been on a taxation board. People do come and they tell you to tighten your belt and to do some other things. And at that point in time, it's your decision as the elected representatives of Spalding County to determine if that's the action you're going to take.
You guys, again, I want to, I would just want to tout how awesome, specifically you two ladies have been in the State House with school choice, trying to get seniors exempted from school taxes. I mean, just fantastic work. You asked earlier, well, what are some ideas that we have? I, I know that I mentioned J splosh to both of y'all, a judicial special local option sales tax that would fund our Sheriff's Department and that kind of stuff, um, which would be a huge offset for, for our, our base mileage rate. Um, and then is, is there any? Has anybody else floated any ideas for changing five eighty-one? For example, the, the floss is a dollar-for-dollar offset. It waits a year. Um, but doesn't actually make up for the, the, the difference, that two million dollar shortfall? Is there a way to, to change that with local option, uh, local legislation to have a, a floss o- offset all the loss, you know, the loss to the county with freezing the assessments and decrease the mileage rate? Like, like, some of those are some of the ideas that we've kind of been talking about.
There, there is a way to do that, but again, it would be a separate referendum and the good citizens of Spalding County would have to vote on any, any type of splosh or any type of referendum. And, um, regarding, um, it was mentioned too, you collect that, um, floss for a year before you get it. We don't know what the offset's going to be because you can't collect more in the, in the floss than what the offset would have been. The Department of Revenue will cut it off. They won't know that. We collect taxes in arrears. So that's why that, that one-year offset exists.
But obviously, in order to enact any sort of floss, splosh, T splosh, E splosh, it, it comes to a referendum. But right now, the way that the floss works wouldn't actually add any money into the county. You see what I'm saying? Like, that's the, the floss.
It would not improve the county. It would add money into your budget, but it would not improve the county. But it would not improve the county in any way.
But you see what I'm saying? So there's, there's.
It's a dollar-for-dollar offset.
There's that gap. Is there a way to get local legislation to change the way a floss would work here, which then the voters would have to pass, of course, just like anyone else, that would allow that offset to also cover that gap? Well, again, you asked for ideas.
And that's a great idea. Um, it, but that, if you guys could send it to me in the form. And that's a great idea. Um, it, but that, if you guys could send it to me in the form of an email and a regulation. And at that point in time, I'm happy, um, Karen and I, I'm speaking on her behalf, we're happy to go to Legislative Council and, um, and
And see if it works, see if it's constitutional.
See what we can do, yes, most definitely. But again, um, today is the seventeenth of February.
Right.
And we're out by April fourth.
When is Sunny Day?
Sunny Day is April fourth.
No, yeah.
Now, yeah, it's April fourth.
It's half. Crossover there, that's what I meant to say.
Crossover doesn't matter.
This is low, so it won't be affected by
Okay.
We just have to have it in by day thirty-five, which is gonna be the end of March.
Okay, okay.
So if we had something to you by March fifteenth, you could work that.
Um, well Legislative Council's gonna have to work their magic as well. Um, unfortunately you sent it to us and it has to go to them and there's about a five-day waiting period right now. So, um, preferably if you could get something around the tenth, it'd be better.
Okay, thank you. That, that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Uh, again, we, we can opt into this later. But once you opt in, you can opt out, right?
Well, we have legislation, um, I believe there were, there were two, two of your, um, commissioners on a call today. We have legislation, Shaw Blackman is the Chair of Ways and Means, hasn't passed yet. Um, but we have a bill, um, HB ninety-two, which actually extends your opt-out till March thirty-first, not
But that hasn't passed yet.
It's, well, no, it has not. But it will, trust me, it's about to be a lightning bolt. Um, and, and, but you have to, but you have to base what you have on what the law is right now. I understand that.
Right.
Um, but there are some changes and some things that we have seen, that we do have, um, that should be, I guess, we, but are we voting on it tomorrow? I think it's on the docket for tomorrow or the Wednesday and then it'll go to the Senate and, um, hopefully the governor will sign off before March first. Um, but, um, we recognize in that legislation, which again has not passed, um, we recognize in that legislation, I believe they have the ability to opt out every year. Um, you have to have public meetings, but you have the ability to opt out every year from, um, this year till twenty twenty-nine. Um, which makes it a lot more attractive because if you see it's not working, you can opt out. Um, but again, that's not something that we put in. There was a lot of negotiation with the Senate. We, we make wonderful bills in the House. I don't think there's any senators here tonight. Oh, sorry. The, the Senate has a fun way of, uh, of, of improving upon things sometimes in ways we didn't anticipate. So, was that okay? Okay, thank you. So, um, so we're, we're, we understand it's not a perfect bill and I'm not gonna sit here and defend it as a perfect bill. Um, there was, the Senate wanted to make it where there was no opt-out, you had to opt-in. And, um, we, we were not having it because you were all duly elected to do your jobs. It would be unfair for you to be, uh, to be elected and then say, all right, you, here, you figure out your budget now because you don't have, you know, don't have the ability to determine what you're doing with your taxes. But, um, Karen, is there anything you'd like to add?
Just want you to clear that up as far as opting in and out, so, yeah.
Did you have another comment? I'm getting ready to finish up with them.
I, I do have one more comment. It's not necessarily about this, but since I've got you here. Um, the, every state that it's tried, every state that it's been passed, tort reform has been a disaster. Please, please, please do not vote for it. It does not lower insurance rates. It has been proven to raise them everywhere it's been passed and it hurts families who need that money. Please, please, please do not, do not do that.
Thank you for your input on that one. I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to say to Representative Camp, apparently I must have really been mean to you because he had to clean it up for me. That's, that's how I know. Um, but no, I hope that I didn't offend you. It wasn't my intent, but you know, that's just who I am.
You did not. Um, I have, I have, I have pretty tough skin and I do look forward to working with you.
Trying to clean it up for me afterwards, I figured they think I've gone in too hard. So I just want to let you know I know that that's what happened.
I'm in the General Assembly. It's full contact sport at times.
So, sometimes literally.
It's a blood sport.
Thank you, ladies. We truly appreciate it. Both Representatives, both Chairman, we appreciate all of the stuff you've done.
All right, at this point, uh, I'm gonna, uh, consideration of, uh, remaining in or opting out of HB five eighty-one, including the implications for property tax revenue and local services. Uh, I want to do this by simply, uh, getting a motion and then having discussion, uh, at that time. Then we'll vote on it after we've had that, uh, discussion. All right? Do I have a motion?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to, um, um, to agree to opt out of House Bill eight, five eighty-one, including the implications for property tax revenue and local services.
All right, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'm, I'm gonna second for discussion.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Now's the time for individual commissioners to have, uh, their say on this. Um, uh, Commissioner Watts, do you want to start with you?
I'm sorry, you're at the end of the lines, so start with you.
Well, of course, I'm the new guy.
Speaking of the microphones, everybody can hear you.
New guy, but looking at this, it's no way that I can opt into this thing with a clear conscience. So, um, I'm looking at, I want to lower taxes, I really do. But you guys elected me to do a job, like Brian says. Four years later, you can, you know, vote me out if it was the wrong decision.
Okay, Commissioner Baldwin?
You said it a lot better than I did. I apologize for cussing while I go, y'all. She gets on me all the time. That's why I don't do the invocation because I love the good Lord, but I get something else come up out of here and y'all don't want to hear all that. Uh, but I'm gonna stand by my, my statements earlier. Um, I, I think it's, it could be good, but like she said, there's still a lot of stuff, Representative Camp, that's in the House. It can be fixed, but at this time I can't in good conscience vote for it the way it sits.
Okay.
No comment.
I, I have faith that our good state representatives, uh, with, with some of the feedback that we've gotten tonight, that we're gonna get to y'all before, you know, March tenth-ish, um, uh, that, that there might be changes that can be made to the way that this works so that we could opt in. And so I'd like to make a motion to table it. Uh, when, when is the new deadline gonna be?
Okay.
Yeah, we have a motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the table already.
And I can make more motions. He can deny it if he wants to, but. I, I believe that a motion to table, like, slides in phrase. I withdraw my second.
Okay.
Okay, I made a motion. Is there a second?
There currently is.
I, I'm on a second at this time because I just feel that we can, we still have the option to opt in. One thing to fix and I'm willing to bite the bullet for a year if I have to. I said, I, I said I'm gonna second it because, um, I, I just, I know that we can opt in. We still have the option to opt in at a later time. Um, and I just, it's like you said, nothing's been passed yet and it's just, we're on the time clock here.
Commissioner Watts, any comments on the, this one?
I'm good.
Well, this is.
Yeah, no, I was just, uh, we have a, a motion, I, and a second. Uh, I want to make sure if there's any comments before we talk about, uh, anything else. Okay, okay.
What do you think?
Let me have a couple minutes and talk about how I saw this whole thing. We started talking about this in, uh, August and September timeframe. We saw five eighty-one coming and I started talking to, uh, focus groups about five eighty-one and what it meant and everything else. Uh, almost everybody, like Commissioner Dutton said, said, this is a tax, uh, reduction. I'll do anything for a tax reduction. It's not what it turns out to be. Uh, first, uh, key issues to me were, um, there's some issues in there that you may not see that, uh, really affect me that, uh, have to do with state control. Anytime state takes and starts putting their hands into, uh, the county, I get deeply concerned. Uh, this will absolutely do that. Uh, that takes control away from us and I'm not very big on that. Uh, when we got into the vote after November, uh, and sixty percent, and in my district, uh, sixty-four percent of the people voted to, uh, uh, do it. Uh, they did not see the words opt-out in what they thought was the, the vote. Uh, uh, I have to feel that, uh, what is the best deal for the citizens? Uh, I do not believe from the focus groups, and I've had a number of those, then I talked to people, they understood what this was about. They didn't understand how freezing one creates having to raise the other. They thought freezing one, keeping the other the same would do it. It's not the way it's working. Uh, so, um, two weeks ago I was all for opting in and saying, yes, we're gonna do this. Um, and the crudely said, it was gonna be opt-in and citizens, you live with what we got. And when the numbers turn out to be worse, you voted to us and you voted to be able to do it. In my heart, I can't do that to you. I can't turn around and look at you and say, yep, you voted for it and I went ahead and said yes to it because you did, knowing that it was gonna hurt you financially. I can't do that. I don't want to do it. Uh, there is no real good answer to be able to say, uh, I think Michael or somebody said, uh, uh, this is almost lose-lose, uh, the way we do it. When I talked to the focus group and asked them, why are you voting, why do you want me to vote for, uh, opting in? They turned around and they said, we don't care so much about you opting in. We don't like the way that's still being done right now. Okay, what don't you like about the process we're doing right now? What we don't like about it is how much taxes we're paying. Well, how much taxes we're paying is not gonna be solved with five eighty-one. It's an issue with me as far as I'm concerned. How much out of this hand, how much out of this hand? To be able to do that. So, um, I'm, uh, I'm okay with, uh, uh, opting out. The reason I'm okay with opting out is because I believe that gives us a better chance of being able to do something else. Uh, I want to thank, uh, Representative Camp and Representative Mathiak for coming and saying that again. Uh, this is not easy. Um, I appreciate them taking the time, a couple of hours out of their life to be able to do this when they're in session. Uh, so, all right. Um, at this time, are we ready to vote?
Yes, sir.
All right. Uh, all those in, uh, in favor of the, uh, motion to stay out, to go out, please raise your hand. Five, zero, motion carries. That's the end of that. Now, so you know, we voted to opt out. At this time, I'm gonna take a, uh, uh, it's eight thirty-three. At eight forty-five, we're gonna start again and we'll take a break. It's been a long time for some people's bladders. We'll start again to be able to do it and some people are just here for the vote. We have other business to conduct tonight. So thank you for all that you came. Please come again. Please think about such things as joining us during the budget.
You know, we love y'all.
Billy, it puts us in a position where we can now make another deal.
So there needs to be a citizens' finance committee to come in and do budget review with us. Yeah, it's just reviewing, yeah. Re, yeah. I mean, I, I'm totally for that because if it will get more citizens involved in it. Hey, it is what it is. I mean, they will hear the same thing that we hear. They can come back and say, why won't you do blah, blah, blah? And we can say, that truck is ninety-eight years old or it's not ninety-eight years old. Because they're gonna look at stuff in different ways than we look at it. So, I mean, I think Yes, ma'am. I'm good. How are you?
Go by his house, he'll probably help us. They got him.
But it's a separate residence?
Just to do tonight, so if you would please move on out. You can go out into the hallway and talk and do all your stuff. All right, let's everybody get out. Please. All right. All right, we're back in session. At this time, I'd like to ask our deputy county manager and financial director, Mrs. Erica Die, to present the financial statements as of January 31st, 2025. Ma'am?
Thank you. If the board approves, I would just like to give a summary version of this due to the time.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
The following quick presentation will summarize the county's financial activities effective as of July, January 31st. As of January 31st, seven months have passed in the present fiscal year, which accounts for 53% of the budget. General fund revenues are 54 million, which is 78% of the budget. General fund expenditures and encumbrances total 40.5 million, which accounts for 58% of the budget. Our fire district revenues are 10 million, constituting 85% of the budget. And the fire district expenditures and encumbrances total 10.7 million. Five, 5.7 million of that are encumbrances. The budget revenue and expenditures for July 31st, the revenues have increased by 38%, while expenditures have risen by 12%. This aligns with a typical pattern where the majority of our property tax revenue is collected between December and February. The summary of revenue sources, the county has collected 46.3 million in taxes. The county has collected 3.1 million for charges for services, which accounts for 5.8% of the total. Intergovernmental revenues total 1.8 million, comprising 3.4% of the total revenue reported. For fines and forfeitures, the county has generated 1 million or 2% of the total revenue. Miscellaneous revenue is 961,000 or 1.8%. For license and permits, the total accounts for $493,714 or 0.9%. Investment income accounts account for $144,690 or 0.3% of our revenue budget. And contributions and donations account for $15,449. The summary of expenditures and encumbrances. Employees' salaries, benefits, and FICA taxes account for 57.7% or 23.3 million of total expenditures. The expenditures for purchases and contractual services account to, for 24.88% of the total expenditures or 10 million. For supplies, for as of January 31st, is 2.8 million or 7.1%. For capital outlay accounts, it accounts for 2.6 million or 6.5% of our total expenditures. Other costs account for 2.58%, which includes our T-S-B-L-A-S-T, sidewalk and road projects account for $1 million. Our debt service, which is our lease capital and interest payments, account for 1.2% or $497,033. And finally, the bank balances as of January 31st. For Spalding County, this reflects the cumulative financial assets held by the county. This figure serves as an indicator of the county's economic activity as well as its savings and investment levels during that counting period. The total balance for all of our checking and interest-bearing accounts is $74.2 million as of January 31st. This concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Deputy, the $17 million in the, that's there, is that for? How long can we do without money? How many days of operations will that 17 million be? I know he's going to, this was a...
It's about 90, 92, between 92 and 98 days.
And our issue, what we had asked you all to do is about 90 days.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
For an emergency situation.
That's correct.
If we had hurricane, bad weather, we could operate with about 90 days to be able to do that. And with the tornadoes, we used about $10 million. So, that's why we've got the numbers we've come to. Okay.
Yes, sir.
That is correct. And one of the things that staff has done within this particular line item is we have $5 million of this in a latter investment account. It's making right at 5% interest. And that's why you see the growth month over month as you're seeing over the last five months. So, we're making sure that we're looking out for our community's money.
Okay, do I have motion to approve?
Motion to accept the financial report.
Okay. And any discussion? All those in favor?
That's almost a million dollars in interest every year. That's going to be fantastic.
It's $250,000 a year in interest.
Oh, because it's like stared.
That's correct.
If the whole 17 was, but we can't have one, okay.
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five, zero, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the shorter version. Item number six. We have several awards tonight to be presented. Dr. Ledbetter, if you'd lead us through all this.
Warden Humphries, if you would, please step forward.
We're going to take pictures held on all of these. So, individually, we're going to do them.
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to recognize Officer Gilbert. He has been with us for 20 years, 19 years and three months of those on the same job. He is one of our detail officers and carries out a detail every day. He's been doing that for a long time, does an exceptional job. I told him, he's not real, he's not real comfortable in crowds and public recognition. So, I told him, I said, look, 15 minutes, we'll be in and out of there. I need a little help here, okay?
Oh, my gosh.
So, I would like to recognize Officer Gilbert.
He doesn't have to speak if he doesn't want to.
Stand in front and everybody gets to look at you.
It is with great honor and privilege to introduce Mr. James Sonny Walker. As he makes his way to the front, I'm going to tell you a little bit about him. He was inducted into the Griffin Spalding Sports Hall of Fame in 1988 as best all-around athlete at Fairmont High. After retiring from J.C. Penney, Mr. Walker joined the Spalding County team in February of 1995. He's been, he was a gym attendant at Ambucks for 22 years. Bart Miller was his supervisor for most of those years. After the economic downturn in 2008, Fairmont operations were drastically reduced to part-time services for nearly nine years. In 2017, you, the Board of Commissioners of Spalding County, agreed to return Fairmont to its original service levels. Ms. Simon was hired. We were faced with who would be the best person to support youth program development. Mr. Walker was the immediate choice. He was willing to leave his beloved Ambucks and move to Fairmont Community Center. He's now been there for eight years and what a difference he has made. He is so humble and so well-respected by the youth who attend programs there and by each member of the leisure services family. As you know, this year, City Park Community Center was taken on additional level of service as a warming center during extreme low temperatures. This required our staff to work throughout the night, serving those who live without roofs. Mr. Walker was the first one to volunteer for those less-desired midnight hour shifts. He has always been one who will volunteer for any work assignment and do so with a smile. He is a public servant at his core. As I've told him many times before, Mr. Sonny, I will still wish that I could clone you.
All right, who's shooting first?
I'll shoot first. I'm going. Okay, three, two, can y'all look this way, please? Three, two, one, thank you. Okay, sorry, one, okay, that's, you see, three, two, one, thank y'all.
Hey, right here, where are you? Wait, wait, wait.
Can I get one with his staff, please?
Go Fairmont. Okay. I am very honored, can everybody hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Very...
All right, if you all would move on out, please move on out. We got, we're doing the next one.
I am very honored tonight to present a 40-year service award to Judge Samuel Parks. I am very honored tonight to present a forty-year service award to Judge Samuel Parks. Alright, Judge, Judge Parks has been with the county for forty years, he's been with my magistrate court now for ten years. And, uh, there again, like Kelly said, I wish I could clone him because he, he is a wonderful employee. Always, always at work, always smiling, always happy, I don't think I've ever seen him mad. He says he gets mad, but I, I feel sorry for his wife at home, if that's the case. Uh, but Judge Parks. I'm pretty sure it's not, okay.
At this time, uh, I'd like to ask Commissioner Dutton to read the Black History Month proclamation.
Uh, before I get started, we, we all discussed who should, who should read it, and everybody agreed that it should be me, I, okay, I'll read. Uh, this is there, this is a local version of the same one that the, that the state has passed. Proclamation by the Board of Commissioners of Spalding, Black History Month. Whereas, February is recognized across the United States as Black History Month, a time to celebrate and honor the significant contributions and enduring impact of African-American leaders in our nation's history. And whereas, during this month, we acknowledge the transformative achievements of the African-American community, which has overcome immense challenges to create lasting change for future generations. And whereas, Spalding County is proud of its many African-American residents whose influence is felt both locally and nationally, including notable figures such as Gary and Glenn Reed, Raymond Head, Mary Stinson, Haskell Ward, Freddie Phillips, Wyoming Atias, Janet Bragg, Reverend O. H. Stinson, and Jewel Walker Harps, among many other pioneers of the civil rights movements, whose legacies are woven into the fabric of our community. And whereas, in recognition of Black History Month, we reflect on the progress made towards ensuring freedom and equality for all people, regardless of race, color, or creed, and we reaffirm our commitment to continuing this vital work. And whereas, to preserve and build upon this monumental progress, we must remain vigilant in our efforts to combat injustice, prejudice, intolerance, and racism wherever they may exist. Through collective action, we can secure a safer, brighter future for all residents of Spalding County. And whereas, this Black History Month, Spalding County encourages its citizens to honor the contributions of African-Americans within our county, state, nation, and around the world. Therefore, we, the Spalding County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim February seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, as Black History Month in Spalding County. In witness thereof, we have heretofore set our hands and cause the seal of Spalding County to be affixed to the seventeenth date in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-five. Spalding County Board of Commissioners, Clay Davis, Commission Chair, Steve Ledbetter, County Clerk.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to accept the proclamation.
Accept, thank you. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hands. Five zero, uh, let's do a picture, the five of us, uh, down here with this.
Alright, Larry, you doing first?
Yeah, I'll just got a great one to first line.
Next on the agenda is the citizen comments. Speakers must sign up prior to the meeting and provide their names, addresses, and topics they wish to discuss. Speakers must direct your comments to the board and not to individual members or to the audience. Personal disagreements with the individual members or county employees are not a matter of public concern, and personal attacks will not be tolerated. The chairman has the right to limit your comments in the interest of disposing of the county's business in an efficient and respectful manner. Speakers will be allocated three minutes to speak on their chosen topics as they relate to matters pertaining to the jurisdiction of the Board of Commissioners. No questions will be asked by any of the members during citizen comments. Outbursts from the audience will not be tolerated. Common courtesy and civility are expected at all times during the meeting. No speakers will be permitted to speak more than three minutes or more than once unless the board votes to suspend this rule. Dr. Ledbetter, do we have people to sign up tonight?
Yes, sir, we do, uh, Greg McKibben. If you would, please state your name and address for the record. Thank you, sir.
My name's Greg McKibben, uh, I live at six ninety-nine Camp Ground Road in Griffin. And, uh, I'll try and be brief, I know it's been a long night. I just wanted to bring something to your attention, uh, because I'm gonna be out of town for the whole month, next month, and I'm not sure if this will come up or not. I want to talk to you about the RV Resort that has been proposed for West Ellis. Uh, I want to do a little timeline here. December fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, it was brought before the Planning and Development Board. We found out as a neighborhood that it was padded to the agenda two days before it was to be brought up. We had a large turnout of people opposed to that, uh, proposal for the, uh, park. Um, before it could get started good, it was tabled for the next meeting. Uh, there was three outgoing members, so I can agree with that. But, um, you know, they wanted to gather further info, but that thing is, it showed up two days before the meeting. So, we were able to get people involved. Okay, it was rescheduled for January twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five, three new board members were in attendance, they had been sworn in. And, um, we had seen, or we saw where they had published, Mr. Allen had put it out that the, there was a ordinance that had been drafted by an attorney for the people that were wanting to build the resort. We had heard the application had been withdrawn. Well, now, we understand that there is a hybrid ordinance being worked on by the county. They are actually working on it themselves and, uh, taking parts. And the group that I am working with is No Resort, or NoRVResort.com, and we've presented a separate amendment to what the county already has. And that is to have it in a commercial zone, commercially-zoned area on traffic corridors where you have the water, sewer, and whatnot, and the, the roadways to support it. Anyway, on the twenty-eighth, we did have public comments. And let me see, let me double check. Twenty people spoke, there were twenty against, and there were, oh, zero in favor. Nobody was here that supported this. As they were taking a vote, it was tabled, again, for ninety days. So, you know, it's in limbo, and I'm fixing to run out of time, but I'm gonna give you some, uh, solutions. Maybe a moratorium on RV, uh, campgrounds in the county. So, you can, uh, stay in, uh, compliance with the county comprehensive plan running through two thousand and forty-two, or look at the new amendments that were, or the new amendment. Uh, was asked to be put on this next, uh, meeting that's coming up, Mr. Allen said no, and was given no date when it will be put on there. So, I just wanted to give you this coming down the pipe, so, just a heads up.
Thank you, great, appreciate it.
Johnny Berry. Michael Middlebrooks.
Michael Middlebrooks, eleven oh eight Maple Drive, um, couple of subjects, nothing, just a couple of things I've read and, and looked at. Uh, I noticed an article in the paper, um, with an interview Mr. Dutton did about the lesser-than-quality housing in the county and some of the things that, uh, that he came across in some, in some ventures. Um, and I think I brought this up maybe last year about some of the rental properties in the county and in the city, um, that, to be honest with you, nobody in this room that would, would even think about inhabiting. Um, and yet, the, uh, real estate managers or property owners continue to rotate, um, people through these places, and they just continue to shamble down, uh, or, or degrade, degenerate. I, I'm in full support of some type of inspection fee to get utilities. Um, to the landlord, I know it's gonna trickle down to the renter, but at the end of the day, uh, there's people living in squalor that they shouldn't have to live in. And, and these people are just making bank on them. That's the end of that story. The other thing, uh, there's apparently a resolution or, or something pending about permits for people that serve alcohol. That all sounds good from a revenue standpoint. But to me, a- as I've heard from multiple people, it, it's basically another tax on people that work for a living. If they have to pay a fee to be able to work, to do their job, honestly, the, the business owners that are making the profit, uh, from the alcohol sales, somehow or another, in my opinion, it should be worked into the, the alcohol license. And for whether it be a number of employees, whatever the case may be, uh, to, to tax somebody that's out here at Buffalo's selling a beer by, by telling them, "You've gotta buy a permit from the county to be able to sell a beer to make a tip." That, to me, is just wrong. Um, they're, they're lucky to make ends meet as it is. Uh, and my last subject is, as it has been the last several times I've been here, uh, I don't know where it stands, I've, I've had some issues going on where I haven't had to, or hadn't had the opportunity to dig into it, but the high-density housing plans up by Sun City. Um, I, I will do some research so I can speak a little more intelligently next time I'm here, but I'm really curious if anything's been done with setbacks, with possible lot sizes. Um, and if not, what, you know, I, I wanna read or see where the plan is, somebody maybe can email me what, what changes have may have been made, but we're just asking for more disaster in North, North Spalding if that, uh, if that happens. Thanks, folks.
Thank you, Michael.
David Lynch.
I don't see him here.
No, sir. Um, Mr. Chairman, that's all that have signed up this evening.
Okay, next is, uh, item number eight. Uh, is approval of the following minutes, the January sixth workshop, the February third workshop, the February third regular meeting, the February twelfth, ten a.m. special call meeting, and the February twelfth, six p.m. special call meeting. Do I have motion to approve the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve all of the minutes listed in, in item one of minutes.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hands. Five zero, motion, the minutes are approved. Old business, uh, the only item of old business includes the second reading and approval of the two thousand twenty-five budget amendments for the prior, prior year encumbrances. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Mr. Shamron, on second reading, the approval of the FY twenty-five budget amendments from, for prior year encumbrances.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries. Uh, new business, item number one is approval of the Spalding County two thousand twenty-five CSBG carryover funding. I believe Jeannie Brentley is here to share with us her answers and answer some questions. Thank you for coming to this meeting.
They're not all this fun.
Yeah, not always, so. Um, so I presented to you a packet for Amendment One to the Community Services Block Grant. It was for carryover funds, so Spalding County has allocated some funding for the Community Services Block Grant program each year. The funds that are not expended, um, for that year can be carried over into the next year, so that's what these funds are for. Uh, they're being carried over, we're not establishing any new programs, just basically providing additional funds to the programs that, um, were already in existence.
Shamron, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Spalding County FY twenty-five CSBG carryover funding.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, thank you. Uh, next item, discussion and approval of the encumbrances for funds from the twenty-five, FY twenty-five budget in the amount of two thou-, uh, two hundred and one thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-seven cents for use forward towards the new regional airport. Dr. Ledbetter?
Mr. Chairman, um, I believe several members of the Board of Commissioners met with Mr. Greg Teague of the airport, he's the engineer with Croy, uh, representing the airport authority along with Dr. Randy Peters, who is the chair of that board, uh, requesting for, uh, a two hundred and one thousand, six hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-seven cents expenditure to offset the, um, the purchase of property moving forward for the new airport. That will be encumbered out of this fiscal year's funds. Um, we will list that as a supplemental, uh, part of the budget for property acquisition as well as making arrangements for moving us forward toward the, um, further development of the airport. Uh, this is the first of funding that will be required. Additional funding would be required in the fiscal twenty-six and beyond budgets until the project is complete. This will be a part of our ten percent portion of, uh, allocation funding for the project.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, uh, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, as, as I mentioned when we had the discussion with the, I guess it's the engineer or the, who, Croy, was it Croy?
Just me.
I am looking for some return on investment, and I'm not talking about four years down the road. We have an agreement that was made a gazillion years ago with the city of Griffin to be able to provide joint support of the airport, the old airport, to cover overages. I'm just not comfortable with, at the completion of the new airport, some seventeen or eighteen million dollars that they will be able to get from selling the old airport will not come back to us. I wanna know, how can we make the, a newer, a new agreement? And I know that we have committed to this because that's the how we get in, the federal money and the state money, but I'm just not comfortable with leaving that money in a pocket, and we have basically used taxpayer dollars, and we don't get any reimbursement from what we're doing from now until twenty thirty, twenty thirty-five, till it's done. So, I mean, what, what can we do? I'm, I'm looking at Steve, and I, maybe you got an answer, maybe you don't, or Stephanie, I don't know.
Um, this, Spalding County, the city of Griffin, and the Griffin-Spalding County Airport Authority have entered into an agreement with- have entered into an agreement with, um, the Georgia Department of Transportation and the FAA as joint sponsors of the project. So that agreement, um, which is very old, I would agree, but it says that you will build this airport. It doesn't say that we care how you pay for it, it says that you will build it. And it, it's not something that, um, that GDOT and FAA are very keen to renegotiate at this time.
So, so maybe not necessarily that particular part of, of it, but what I'm saying is building the airport is one thing, and I know that the airport basically belongs to the city of Griffin and.
Um, the airport actually, the property itself belongs to the Griffin-Spalding County Airport Authority. It was conveyed to the, the airport authority by the city and the county who, who did have an interest in it, but no longer do. It is however, encumbered by grant assurances with FAA. So the, the process for selling it, the, the release of it from those grant assurances, all of those, um, have to go through FAA just it, and it's the same process and it took a long time, like we did for Airport Road Park and also for the Kiwanis Fairgrounds for the, the sale of those two properties. Those had to be released from, by the FAA before they could be sold.
So, so I'm not challenging whether or not the, that at some point they can get the FAA to release it. That is what the plan is that once the new airport is there, there is this property that is marketable. My question is, is that the six million dollars that we're still paying from the initial funding.
From the bond issuance?
Right. We, we're, we're not getting anything back from that. And if the, at the end of the day, even if the airport only sells that property for ten million dollars, still there's about seven or eight million dollars that is due to be returned in reimbursement. I don't know why we wouldn't be trying to get some of that back.
Yes, ma'am, I, I agree with you completely. I think that that, uh, that should be a discussion that we have during our joint, Board of Commissioner, Spalding County Board of Commissioner and Spald-, uh, Griff-, city of Griffin Board of Commissioner meeting as an agenda item for discussion for how we recover some of the funding that we have spent to support the, the new and the old airport.
So, yeah, that, that, that's just my point, just that some, we look at how we can recover
Absolutely.
Some of the funding, not, not that we're not going to do it because we're all in, but, yeah.
Right. I, I, I think that is, that is definitely, uh, an agenda item that we could put on for discussion because it, that's a, that's a conjoined effort for returning some of the funds that we've expended. Yes, ma'am.
It is absolutely a, a three-way symbiotic relationship.
Okay, that's all I got, Mr. Chairman.
And we have learned from, uh, uh, working with that, that if we don't get it in writing, we understand how that has gone through with us. All right. Any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero, motion carries. Next page. Item number three. Consider a request for annual funding to support the maintenance and operation of the proposed sewer system for AKB Employment Corridor. Uh, Dr. Ledbetter?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Spalding County Water and Sewerage Facilities Authority has asked this board to consider funding, um, on an annual basis, the support a, of maintenance and operation of the expense for the proposed sewer system that will be located on Arthur K. Bolton Boulevard for the Employment Corridor in support of, um, commercial, industrial, and manufacturing development that is pending along that corridor. Uh, this would not be for an immediate support, but would be added to the fiscal twenty-six, the fiscal year twenty-six budget, uh, and their request is for five hundred thousand dollars in support of that effort. Uh, and staff would ask that the board consider, uh, what level of funding if you would support the five hundred thousand dollar request, uh, or if you would support, uh, an additional amount for support of the sewer system along AKB.
I think this is a dual issue for me. First is, uh, I don't have any problem having, uh, the five hundred thousand dollars put into the FY twenty-six budget hopper that, uh, Steve is working through to be able to do that. That's, so I don't have a problem with that. It can compete with everything else. Uh, secondarily, uh, and more importantly to me is trying to show the emphasis on us trying to move down sewer on AKB. We've got to figure out how to get that done. And right now, if we don't do something, the priority to get that done is not there financially for us. We've got to look at and talk about, and then we've got to give guidance to Steve in the budget, what do we want to do? And if we're going to say we're going to get behind the sewer on AKB and get money to the, uh, Spalding County Water Authority, we've got to figure out what that looks like. So I think that that is a pretty good sized task that we may be able to talk about in a workshop, uh, and then sit down and say, all right, this is what we're going to do or not do for this. This is significant look at, all right? We agree with all that? James, you look like you're.
I'm, I just have, I got some real, like logistical questions about it, but the idea of funding those things, uh, as far as, because that's going to lead more into industry.
Yes.
I'm, I'm for that idea in theory, the logistics of it.
Oh, we all agree.
Funding on authority.
So my issue, let's go ahead and put this on the workshop for the first March meeting, and let's talk our way through it, at least in a discussion and bring up what are the logistics things, what are the issues that Steve's got with this whole thing, uh, and kind of wh- how much we're talking about trying to put into the budget to do this? Uh, or is this something that is, uh, too, too big for us to touch right now? All right, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, what I'd like to say about this, and I don't have a problem with workshopping any of this information, but we have beat people down in this meeting and two other meetings just recently explaining to them that the answer to our problems are commercial and industrial growth. When there was land in, uh, at Green Valley and at the industrial park area out on sixteen, we spent thirty million dollars to help buy land that belonged to the Crouch's. We spent five million dollars to help the Development Authority get sewer capacity that they don't really need, haven't really needed, and it's just sitting there. Um, we have, in addition to that, funded the Development Authority more than twenty million dollars just out of our budget over these years. So there's, it's not, it's not a question for me. Is the Development Authority still working for us? Yes, I believe that they are with what they have to work with. But where the money is right now is in the development of sewer. So we can't be honest with people and say that we're working on it when we're counting on somebody else's pocketbook to do it. And I want to also share with you that there is no way that the development, that the water authority can ever make money off sewer. So this, this task that they're taking on is particularly to help us to gain economic development strength. So, so for me, it's, it's not even a question because we have to make the investment somewhere. And if the answer for us right now is sewer expansion down sixteen, I don't think that we can go into this and expect them to take, uh, water customer money to provide sewer. So the county.
It's rich.
Yeah.
Oh.
So, so, yeah.
And we've got a, a big issue with us is how much are we going to, how much do we want to talk about? You know, so, and we've got to have that. I think this is a, a conversation also with the water authority. How much do you need and which years do you need it to be able to do this? So, all right, we'll put that all off on, uh, the first, the five hundred thousand dollars goes to, uh, you put yours in your budget hopper and then, um, on the first meeting and at the workshop, we'll talk about the concept of, and hopefully, uh, uh, Dr. Ledbetter, if you had come up with talking to the water authority and see, do they need it now? Do they need it in two years? Do they need it for two years? What do they, what is their real need? And we understand the return on investment we're going to get, but we got to talk about, hey, is this ten years? Is this two years? Is this, we need it in twenty-seven, twenty-eight? We don't need, okay, you got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's, uh, at this point, I think we're at the report.
If that was an action item, don't we have to do something?
It needs a motion to table, yes.
We, we need a motion to table for that and, uh, bring it back at the workshop for March third.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to table item three hundred new business, which is considering the annual funding to support maintenance and operation of the proposed sewer system on AKB Employment Corridor and have this to come back up to us at a workshop.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any more discussion? All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Five zero. All right, uh, we're now at the, uh, report of the county manager.
Mr. Chairman, in, uh, in response to the time of the hour, uh, I will make mine extraordinarily brief. I'm just very proud of the team for the work that they did yesterday. Indications yesterday afternoon was that a small tornado went, uh, either over or in some portions through, over to Butts County and, uh, over into Locust Grove. So, uh, the weather turned very badly, very quickly. And for those of us who live in Sun City Peachtree, uh, it went right over the top of our house at about two minutes after four yesterday morning, so we were all asleep. The teams that were out, we stood up the emergency operations center yesterday morning very, very early. Uh, the teams that were out just did one remarkable job again, uh, within the course of three weeks of the we- uh, winter weather event, uh, did another remarkable job yesterday and had us completely cleaned back up in about seven hours. So, uh, as of late this afternoon, there was only one road that was still closed, and I believe this evening that road has been opened up. Uh, but very proud of this team, very proud of the work that they do, the hard effort that they put in, the hours that they put into work. And, um, I, I, I can assure you that, uh, Chief Polk was actually a part of the event, even though he was just on the phone. Uh, the man is just absolutely amazing.
He let him get some rest.
I, I did, I told him to get some rest. Good news from, from that story, his doctor has released him to, uh, light duty, so he is, he's going to actually take the rest of the week off and be back next week for a light duty, but this team is amazing, folks, and I can't, I can't thank them enough.
Yeah, there's a, thank you for the updates. Sheriff, thank you for the updates on passing that information around. People were writing and seeing and I, I got two messages in the next minute, your information came out, so thank you for letting us all know. These are the streets and everything else, so.
Oh, absolutely.
The whole thing was very well done on that.
The sheriff and his team, they were outriding the roads, making sure that they were identifying everything that needed to be cleaned up, and then the fire department and the public works guys were right behind them cleaning as, uh, as we were being instructed by the sheriff. Can't thank all of this, this entire team enough for the work that they do.
All right, deputy county, I'm moving pretty quickly, deputy county manager?
Same goes for me, everything that Dr. Ledbetter said, great team effort, uh, for the storm that we had yesterday, and I just wanted to remind everybody that about our FY twenty-six budget calendar, uh, any and, any and everybody is invited to, for the week of April the seventh to the eleventh, when we have our meetings with the commissioners concerning all department head budgets, anybody is welcome to attend.
Okay. Commissioner Watts?
Yeah, I would like to say great, um, work by the team as well. My wife woke me up at four o'clock in the morning, running down to the basement, so we were kind of scared. But I also want to say happy President Day. And, um, I also want to thank Mr. Gilbert, Mr. Walker, and Mr. Park for their service.
Oh, oh, thank you. Commissioner Bolden? All right. Commissioner Dutton? She, no, she's done.
I'm dead.
I, I just have, I just have a couple of things. The idea tonight was brought up to sell the pool. If somebody wants to buy it, I don't, you know, and then operate it as a, you know, a public pool, they, you know, sell tickets, I, I'd be all for that, but I don't, I don't know if anybody's going to buy our ten million dollar pool.
I just wanted to say one thing. I know I, I wasn't supposed to say it, but what, what I did find out was at our meeting, our leisure services meeting, the debt that we're supposed to have for this year for one point one million dollars has been reduced by at least three hundred thousand dollars with fees collected at the aquatic center.
Awesome.
Awesome.
That's great news.
So, yeah, it may not pay for itself, but it looks like within this few month period that they have really done some pretty extensive stuff to generate the money that they said they were going to. So I, I have faith that over years' time that they will be able to cover the M and O.
Okay, good, thank you.
Hairs crossed. I, I love that our two representatives and a, and a senator, I, I didn't catch where that senator, you know, who he represented, but, um, I'm glad that, I'm glad that they came out, I'm glad that, uh, we have the relationship that we have with them. Uh, I really hope that we can get some changes to HB five eighty-one or local legislation or however we can to, to, to make that work. The, the theory that they have is, is good, uh, but it, it needs a bit more massaging so that we can, we can get it to actually not cause millage rate increases, uh, here. We talked a little bit about the sploß tonight. Again, it's, it's a hearty no for me unless it's needs and not wants. The last sploß was a bunch of neat stuff, but nobody died and would, you know, if we don't get pickleball courts, you know, nobody dies if we don't get a, an aquatic center. Like, that said, the county collapses if we don't fix our roads. The county collapses if, uh, you know, people are paying too high taxes. The idea of, um, using it to offset some of the, our millage rate, using it to fund some of these things we just talked about as far as, uh, increasing, I mean, they're shopping at the bits to come here, uh, but like, we, we, you know, they don't have sewers and stuff, so, boy, if we could, if we could check that box, that would be phenomenal. And then, of course, you know, just general road repairs, uh, the T-sploß has been a fantastic success. And again, we want to re-invite everyone, uh, we do this all the time, uh, to, to come and look at the budget. And, uh, it was brought up online to have almost a Department of Government, uh, efficiency here in Spalding County. If that's what gets people involved to come and put eyes on this budget, let's, let's do it. We were, there was some talk tonight about, uh, sort of a citizens finance committee that could, you know, a- absolutely, I'm so in favor of that, and, and I've, I've been so since before I was elected. Please come and look at every line item, and if it is too vague, somebody said, some of these line items are kind of round numbers, okay, then let's, let's ask that question. They're, they're here and under fire, we get to cross-examine them, you know what I mean? Like, let's, let's delve into that. And I, I, again, I don't think, you know, we passed our forensic audit, we passed the yearly audit, uh, done by independent folks, this isn't just internal stuff, but, uh, I think as well, uh, you're, you know, you're not going to find any fraud, you're not going to find any waste, there, there really isn't that there, but if you can, if you've got an idea that we don't have, that would save the taxpayers money, that would allow us to expand services, that would allow us to, you know, let's, let's do it. You know, I, I brought back from the ACCG that, that enterprise service, we gave that a shot, horrible failure, but, uh, you know, we're, we're, we're trying new stuff and we're, we're trying to figure out ways to, to stretch every dollar, and we've got some great ideas, but there surely are more ideas than what we have throughout the rest of the county, and we would love those ideas here. Lastly, we went with my family yesterday and we hiked, uh, my, my church was out of power, so they, they canceled church for us, so we decided to go on a family hike at Cory's Edge Park, and, um, it's, it's really fantastic. Like, we've got a really fantastic, uh, park. Unfortunately, there's, there's quite a lot of trash that gets, uh, flooded into there from, from the stream, but, uh, otherwise, man, just, Spalding County really does have some, some really great, uh, things for our citizens to enjoy here, and, uh, I, I wish more people take advantage of them in a positive way.
Okay. Next item is, uh.
You got anything?
In consultate, huh? No, no, I, I'm, in consultation with the county attorney and other legal counsel to discuss pending and potential litigation, settlements, claims, administrative proceedings, and other judicial actions brought to or to be brought against the county or any other officer or employee in which the county or an officer may be directly involved as provided by OCGA fifty fourteen two dash one. Do I have a motion?
Motion, uh, to go and take a decision for that reason, those reasons.
Do I have a second?
We don't want to go when they're down here. We're not trying to second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second from Commissioner Flowers-Taylor. All those in favor, please raise your hand. We're in executive session, we'll come back out when this is over with, close out. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand.